I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Thank you. And we, it looks like we are not broadcasting this evening on Facebook, Facebook Live, so that will be available afterwards. All right, public comments this evening from the board? Do we have any public comments? All right.
I do. I just want to announce that tomorrow evening, for those people in the Lunenburg Water District, if you are a Water District voter, there is a special meeting at the Water District Headquarters off Mass Ave at six o'clock tomorrow, where they are requesting voters support a, um, a study for the Hickory Hills well, what it would take to put that back online and treat, treat the water, which is high in iron, manganese, and PFAs. So that is the question being asked for the voters, the Water District Superintendent and Commissioners were here several weeks ago talking about that project, but the special meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that important reminder, uh, for that meeting tomorrow. Any additional public comments this evening from the board?
None. I have none.
All right. Any public comments this evening from the public? Are we seeing any online?
No.
All right. Okay. Uh, any announcements this evening?
Uh, just, um, Halloween trick or treat hours are six to eight PM on October 31st, and the special town meeting is November 15th at 7:00 PM at the middle school, high school auditorium.
Great. Thank you for that. All right, we do have a 7:15 appointment, but we are going to take it at 7:15, so let's go to the interviews, appointments, and reappointment.
Okay. Um, so I'm asking the board to ratify the appointment of Michelle Bouvet. Uh, Michelle worked, or she actually attended Lunenburg High, and she's worked as a medical secretary and as an office manager for a doctor's office prior. And she comes recommended from the council on aging director as well.
Yeah. Is this gonna fill the, uh, all remaining positions?
This will help fill the Monday slot.
Okay.
And any, um, and any available, uh, vac, uh, not vacancies, but shifts that become available.
Okay. Any questions or comments to the town manager related to this, uh, request to ratify the appointment? All right. Is there a motion to, uh, ratify?
Move that we ratify the town manager's appointment of the council on aging van driver, Michelle Bouvet. Uh, second.
All right, any additional discussion on this? If meetings are in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. All right.
Mr. Chair, I just got, we just got word from the booth that we are live on Facebook.
All right. Thank you. All right, so we're live on Facebook and that motion passes. Um, so, uh, please congratulate Michelle on our behalf.
Okay.
All right. Uh, are you ready for the town manager?
There is no town manager report today.
Okay. All right, so typically, uh, let's see, we have a 7:15 appointment, we're a little early. Uh, any communications from other boards? Do we have any communications from any of the boards? I feel like I was missing something there.
No.
No. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and do our 7:15. Uh, so we're gonna have our 7:15 appointment, couple minutes early, and this is a public hearing. Uh, do we have the public hearing notice? Uh, language?
It should be in the Google Drive as well.
All right. Yes, it's in the Google Drive. All right. Um, Mr. Franco, would you mind just reading the public hearing notice?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Lunenburg Licensing Authority will hold a public hearing on October 18th, 2022, at 7:15 PM in Town Hall. Seventeen Main Street, Second Floor, Lunenburg, Massachusetts, on the application submitted by Il Forno Lunenburg Bar Incorporated, for an alteration, uh, to licensed premises for the Section 12 On-Premises Alcohol License located at 494 Electric Avenue, Lunenburg, Massachusetts. The alteration is the addition of a 30 by 50-foot outside structure located to the right side of the building. The following information is also provided for members of the public that would like to participate in the meeting remotely. To participate remotely from a computer, please use the link below. Is that even possible right now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, yeah, okay. Uh, it's a Zoom link. So, to participate remotely from a computer, please use the link below to join the public meeting webinar. Uh, okay, so the, the link is?
Don't, don't read the link.
Don't read the link, okay.
Tell them the meeting ID at the end of it. Tell them the meeting ID at the end of it.
All right. Uh, or from a telephone, dial the phone number 888-475-4499 and enter webinar ID 813-4690 4089 pound. If you have not registered with Zoom, you will be asked for username and email address. Note, no participant ID is needed, just press pound when asked. Telephone users may dial, uh, star nine to requ, uh, to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. Michael Ray Jeffries, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Franco, and with that, we are going to begin this evening's, uh, public hearing with, uh, regard to Il Forno located at 494 Electric Ave in Lunenburg. Uh, is there a representative from Il Forno's here with us this evening? No representative from Il Forno with us this evening?
Well, they may, they may have noted at 7:15, so.
Yeah. Why don't we, we've already read the notice, uh, let's, we've already opened the public hearing. Uh, is it proper to pause the public hearing and then continue down the agenda? Or to close the public?
And recess it.
To recess?
Yeah, recess.
All right, is there a motion to recess the, uh, public hearing until 7:15?
Motion to recess until 7:15, the public hearing for Il Forno.
Second.
Any additional discussion? If meetings are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Uh, we will recess, uh, the public hearing until 7:15. Okay. On our agenda this evening, uh, a lot of this is workshops, so I, I kinda wanna skip the workshop for now, uh, and old business. Let's go with the easy one here. Let's sign the, uh, 2022 state election warrants. So, we have, uh, state election warrants, and, uh, these note the, uh, the questions, and then our, uh, signature page. So, there's five copies. All right. So this is just noting that the election this year, and this is for the, um, statewide, so we have a governor, lieutenant governor for the Commonwealth, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer, Auditor, and then we have, uh, for representatives in Congress, we have the third district, we also have, uh, counselor for the seventh district, we have Senator in General Court, and this is Worcester and Middlesex District, uh, we have Representatives in General Court, First Middlesex District Representative in General Court, Third Middle, Third Worcester District, District Attorney, um, and then also, um, the, for, and that's for Middlesex District, and then Sheriff for Worcester County. We need to sign all five?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I will start passing them down as I sign.
You didn't sign this one. Where did you sign this? Oh, what is this back page?
Do we have two back pages?
This one has two back pages.
All right.
All right. So, I'll leave it open.
Actually, can we, could you pass that first one back? The first one we signed back? Thank you. We do need to sign the last page, because there are no dates on it.
Okay.
On this, the first one. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes for October the 4th?
So moved.
Is there a second? I will second, uh, so.
Did I miss them in the drive?
I don't think they're in the drive.
Were these emailed?
Uh, they should have been.
Warrants will be easy, we don't have any. We're just cranking along here today.
Yeah, this is going frighteningly quickly.
This is where we typically say that whoever's out, in this case Heather, that this is, this is what makes the meeting longer, right?
All right.
Whoever that might be.
Elaine sent those on October 13th.
All right. Are we prepared to approve the minutes for October the 4th? We need to wait another week?
I, I, I would request that we wait another week.
I will rescind my motion.
All right, second, rescind it as well. All right, we will postpone, it won't be another week, it's gonna be November, but.
Okay.
Any action items? Do we have any action items this evening?
I have no action items.
No? Okay, so we've.
I think we can un-recess the meeting if we need to.
Okay. And it looks like we have a representative here to speak to the Il Forno public hearing? Okay. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, resume the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right. If meetings are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. All right, we are back into our public hearing, please come forward. So this is again, we've already read the public hearing notice, uh, this is a public hearing with regard to Il Forno, uh, located at 494 Electric Ave. Uh, please state your name and address and, uh, the nature of your request today.
I am the owner of Il Forno Restaurant. My name is Mike Mohammed, and we are at 494 Electric Ave in the beautiful town Lunenburg.
All right. Could, would you mind just summarizing what your request is, uh, here this evening?
Well, uh, we put in, in a building, instead of the tent, 30 by 50, and it's already been approved as far as the sidewalk by the town. Uh, we seeking, we serve an alcohol right now in a tent under restrictions of COVID, and that will be over very soon, I believe, in April sometimes. So just so we gather in ourselves together, ready to go forward the process and to get it done now than later. Basically, that's what's all what we're doing, just to allow us to continue doing what we're doing when the building is built.
Okay. And so you, you're looking for kind of a, a permanent?
Correct.
Uh, arrangement to continue to utilize the tent, uh, after the COVID protocol restrictions are eased?
That's right.
As essentially an extension of your premises?
Correct. To continue that and make it permanently instead of permanent, instead of temporary right now.
Okay. Um, I will wait till the other members have had the opportunity for my, uh, questions. Are there any questions, uh, to the applicant or comments to the applicant this evening? In our drive, this is the, uh, alteration of premises request?
I will start. Now this, in the floor plan that you submitted, this isn't the same place where your tent is now.
It's gonna be exactly the same, but smaller than what it is. Right now, the tent is 30 by 60, the building will be 30 by 50.
Okay. The floor, the location doesn't look the same, because the, the one that I remember seeing is on the side, and this is shown in the back.
I think this is the front right here, that, that right there is the parking lot.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, fair enough.
Wait, I'm, I must be reading this upside down as well.
Uh, it, this is the front, this is the parking lot over here, I presume, correct? Well, yeah, so. If you look where the bar is.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so the only question, so the question I have is, is there gonna be somebody, staff to make sure that nobody leaves with?
Of course.
Alcohol, okay.
Definitely. As is, with the tent is, that's what we do. We supervise everything, and we have a staff working, and, uh, of course, we get treated just the way the work is being done inside the restaurant, either inside or out, we follow the same regulations.
Good.
Still guarding people, just making sure they're old enough to do what, what they're for.
Now, there has been no issues with the alcohol license up till now, right?
No. We've been there almost three years so far, and, uh, no issues whatsoever.
I have no, no further questions, and I have no objections to the request.
I, I have no questions either, and I also have no objections to their request.
Same. No questions, no objections.
Okay. I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, uh, as we, as we look at the, as we look at the regulation, uh, that we have regarding to physical premises, so I'm, I'm gonna bring your attention to Section 1.05, and this is underneath, um, um, Article Four of the Select Board Policies. So, I'll summarize, it's pretty clear. All this says is that you have to come before us to do this, you know, that, that's the gist, that it's not allowed otherwise, um, and then it speaks to, um, kind of the physical premises in terms of a floor plan, and, and so the floor plan you've provided to us, um, and, and I do, I'm not as, uh, I'm not, I'm concerned about the level of detail in it. So the floor plan that you submitted to us, you know, includes a lot of detail related to the restaurant, but then it's just kind of a area marked out of 30 by 50?
Fifty, right.
For the tent. And I think, um, a floor plan would, in my opinion, suggest kind of a layout of what's gonna be, what was gonna happen in that space. And I, and.
The layout is not gonna be no bars inside the building, inside the, a new addition, per se.
Yep.
There's not gonna be anything beside tables and chairs, and waitstaff serving the customers. Basically, that's what it is.
It's in the Google Drive on the floor plan, the second page, just put it up, there you go.
Got it. Okay.
As simple as the tent exists in right now.
All right. And your, your intent, as you wrote in the, um, as you wrote in the application, is for, you're, not to change your seating capacity at all?
None whatsoever. Actually, we're decreasing the seating capacity instead of increasing the seating capacity, because we're moving people from, moving tables and chairs from the dining room to outside, just to keep it more fluid, just to keep it more spacious, just in case something else again happened, COVID again, something similar to COVID, and this will be ahead of the curve.
All right. So you're, you're basically looking to expand your building with a temporary structure, is that right?
Correct.
All right. I'm not as comfortable with that, and, and, um, I'll, I'm not as comfortable with that idea. So I, I think that the, we, there's a lot of flexibility here, right? So there's a, there is a flexibility, I think, from the other, from the members of the board, from, you know, in terms of which way we wanna go on this. My opinion is, I think that alcohol, uh, I, you know, you've obviously run a really reputable business, we've had no, no concerns at all, uh, from where you're at. What my concern is, uh, is, is the, is the next business that comes in, uh, and I'm thinking something kinda right across, almost across the street from you, the next bar that comes in that says, hey, we wanna have a permanent tent out here. Um, and then the, my concern would be, well, what are the criterias that we're evaluating today to say yes to this one, and then no to that one?
Let me correct you, just one second. You said another bar comes in. We're not a bar.
Correct.
We're a restaurant, serving alcohol.
Correct.
We're not a bar. So, we cheat our customer, we shut down by eight o'clock. We, we not there for the purpose of serving alcohol. We there serve good food, and people enjoy either a cocktail or a glass of wine with their food. It's a family restaurant.
Yep.
It's not a bar.
I, I can appreciate that. You have an al, you have a liquor license, though.
Yes, I do.
Uh, which is the same as a bar, and so my, my comment was not about the food portion, but about the alcohol portion. That's why you're here before us today, is because you serve alcohol. Uh, and so, you know, my concern is the next hearing that we have with someone who also serves alcohol, uh, who's looking to extend their building with a temporary structure. You know, out of curiosity, have you, you know, why a temporary structure? Why not?
It's not a temporary structure, sir. It's a permanent, uh, structure. It's a permanent building. It's gotta sit there for whatever the length of the building exists in. It's a building, it's going to be built. The, the, the tent is a temporary, but the building is gonna be sitting there because it's gonna be a solid structure.
So, the floor plan that you're showing us, you're saying that this is, this 30 by 50 area, I, I thought I heard you say that you were decreasing the size of this current tent from 30 by 60 to 30 by 50?
Replacing the tent with the building.
Say again?
We're replacing the tent with the building.
Okay.
The tent will be gone, the tent is temporary, the building will be permanent.
Got it. So what you're proposing then, and this is perhaps my misunderstanding, is that you're saying you're gonna build a 30 by 50?
Correct.
Portion onto the building?
Yes.
And that's not a temp, not a tent, a permanent structure, and so you're just looking for the expansion related to that?
Serving the alcohol. Correct.
And to, today, what's there today?
There, as we're speaking, is the tent.
Okay.
And the tent is still under COVID regulations.
Correct.
And COVID regulations continue on until April, but we try to get ahead of the curve and to get all, all our paperwork done before we start any, uh, constructions. We're not gonna start construction yet, probably in the spring, but this is what we're doing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may try to clarify, I think what he's looking for in this is, until it becomes the building, at which point he doesn't need an extra extension of the license, he wants to continue using the tent until the building is completed.
And also.
And then it'll be in part of the building, therefore it'll be covered by his license anyway.
That's right.
But he doesn't want an interruption of that, because the COVID rulings are gonna be expiring soon, and his building will be done by the time that happens.
Okay. You're gonna build?
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. You're planning on building around this tent, or are you, at some point, is this tent coming down?
Tent will come down because the building will replace, replace the tent. Cannot be both together.
Yeah, and then, that's what I would, that's what I would expect.
Come down first, because we have to dig in and do some foundations and stuff, so the tent has to go, which is very soon.
Yep.
And when the time comes, just start doing the building, that's what we're gonna start building in replacement of the tent.
So where I'm at on this one is, is I, I'm not quite, it's perhaps not clear to me why you're here today. Uh, I, I think I heard what Mr. Alonso just said, but what you're saying is that you have a tent there now, which you're allowed to continue to use until April, and then after that, you plan on putting up a building in that space instead. So what is the gap period that you're trying to protect yourself on? If, if the plan is to put up a building right immediately after?
Well, the tent will be slightly down by, maybe after Thanksgiving, but what I'm saying is, we're doing the alteration of the license now versus waiting until COVID is over with, COVID restrictions will be over with, just to try to get ourselves ahead of the curve and to get things done now before later.
All right. The, the map that I'm looking at, though, looks like a tent map. Is this, is this the exact floor plan you're?
No, it's not. We already submitted all the paperwork, we already submitted the plan to the zoning board, the planning board, and.
So what I have in front of me says, Il Forno Propose Outdoor Dining Tent Floor Plan.
Building.
And then in parentheses, building. So it, I guess I'm asking, is, is this plan that I'm looking at, and I can show it to you, is this the plan?
Very much is gonna be the same, but a little shorter, smaller. Basically, that's what it is right now.
Do you have those floor plans for the building you plan on building?
We have, uh, yes, we, it's out to be, out to bid, to get pricing. Yes. Very much similar to this, exactly. It's gonna be just rectangular building, 30 by 50, and we'll get tables and chairs. There's no water service there, there's no plumbing, there's no other things. It's just to the purpose of the existing tent, but it's gonna be permanently structured building.
Okay.
Versus having tent, take it down, up and down every single season.
Yep.
It's, that's the purpose.
Yeah, I, I think it's.
It's much safer than having the tent.
I, I agree.
Yes.
So, it, it seems pretty clear to me. I think on my side, um, I'd much prefer to see a building plan, um, of what this full building will look like. We're, you know, is the, it will, right now, this says that it's a tent entrance slash exit, so I'm gonna assume that there's gonna, is there a building entrance exit in this area as well?
Yeah, definitely has to be exit and entrance in the building by itself, yes.
Now, I'm talking the ad-own, so the ad-own's gonna have a separate entrance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not separate entrance, it's gonna be separate exit, but entrance. Entrance will go in, I mean, you know, we got people coming to the restaurant, inside the restaurant, to sit in that building.
Yep.
Basically, they have to come into the restaurant, nobody can come in and out without our knowledge.
Our approval tonight has no impact on your operations for at least the next six months, is that?
Technically, next, yeah, next probably five months.
Okay. I, I, I'll ask my colleagues, I'd prefer to see a floor plan of a building, um, and I, I, I don't think this is adequate enough for me. Um, you know, I, I understand this was the floor plan that was invented for the tent, um, and I, I don't think that crossing out a couple things and, or not really crossing, but adding in some language, I, my opinion is that this should be a floor plan. I'm not gonna hold this up tonight, I'll see what my colleagues' opinions are on this. Uh, I'm not gonna support your application at this time. I think that, I'm not opposed to what you're trying to do, I support what you're trying to do, you're running a good business. I think that what I'd prefer is that, you know, we do have six months here. What I'd prefer is those floor plans that you have, that you have already approved, that you're out to bid on, to, um, re, to submit those to us, and that way we have an actual floor plan of what the buildings are gonna look like, so that way we're approving a floor plan and that we're not approving this, this ad-own. I, I don't think I'm asking for anything beyond what you already have.
No, you're not.
Okay. And that's just, that's my preference.
It's not a problem. I mean, you know, we just try to save sometimes, basically, that's what it is.
Yeah. And everyone, you know, like I said, you're running a good business, we're not, I don't wanna give you hard times. Uh, it's just, as, as I looked through this, initially, I didn't see the floor plan in the initial packet that we received, so I was looking for that tonight, um, but I, I don't find this to be an adequate floor plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I?
When do you plan on building?
Uh, right now, I'll be quite honest with you, it's extremely expensive. We put in, uh, the building out to bid, it's people coming up with just ridiculous amount of dollars, and I decided just to wait another, you know, maybe beginning of the year, once this crazy stuff going on. First of all, very hard to get people to build, material is very expensive, it costs twice as much as what I thought it would be. That's why I'm waiting until beginning of the year, in the middle of the winter, when people, they got no business to do, so maybe someone can come start on this and for less expense than what everybody's asking right now.
Okay.
And that's what I'm planning on.
My, my request to my colleagues is to recess the, uh, public hearing until, um, perhaps beginning of November, uh, for, uh, Mr. Mohammed to provide us just an updated floor plan of what the buildings are actually look like. That's my request to my colleagues. Uh, for, uh, Mr. Mohammed to provide us just an updated floor plan of what the buildings are actually look like. That's my request to my colleagues.
So, Mr. Chair, um, I guess I'm a little confused by the request because I would think that as long as he's gone through the process and gotten his building permits and whatnot, one, once the building permits have been approved and the structures then modified, before he can occupy that space, then he would have to come ba- back to us with a, a, a modified floor plan that, that shows the updated structure. To me, that seems to be, make more sense rather than I, I, I respect the fact that you're being proactive to try and get this done early, but you know, that, that'd be my preference. That way, you know, if it shifts somewhere on the site, you know, a few feet are here or there, he just has it and, and, uh, the file's complete.
I'm not opposed to that approach either.
So I have a question again, if I may. In your app- application, it says we're looking to serve alcohol in our outside structure, which is outside of the building, which will allow our customers, our customers' choice to sit outside versus inside. But you're saying this whole building is gonna be enclosed. It's going to be inside.
It's gonna be a building by itself and people come in inside the restaurant to ask to sit outside. If you are a customer coming into the restaurant, we'll give you the choice if you wanna sit outside or inside.
No, no, I understand that. But the, the area that you're looking, this thirty by fifty structure?
Yes.
Is it going to be outside or inside?
It's outside the buil- outside the existing building. It's right in the parking lot, what instead of the tent.
So, so are, are, is this structure gonna be e- essentially like a?
Three garage, three cars garage.
So it'll be able to like make it open air?
Exactly.
So during the summer, they'll be able to lift windows or whatnot, but you can put down walls and
That's right.
weather and something like that.
Just three cars garage. That's the proposed, uh, uh, building, three cars garage. Open the door in the summer times, spring times, winter time, close the door and still serving business, doing business inside that building because it's gonna be climate controlled. It's gonna be heated and air conditioned. Basically, that's what it is. Instead of people sitting outside, they wanna sit outside in the cold, now we have heaters. We have, you know, air conditioning and doors can be closed. And it's safer. I don't have to take it down every se- every season.
Okay, so with that information?
Yes, sir.
That's not what we have in front of us, so I would agree with the chair that we'd, I wanna see more plans about what exactly. I, I, I was under the impression that you're attaching this thirty by fifty to the building. That's what the diagram showed. And, but now it's showing separate from the building, so, and it's gonna be lots of open areas, which if you're talking about garage bay doors, then I have questions about, okay, you know, how easy is it for people to get in and out? Because it's gotta be a controlled area. So, so then I have questions. So I would need to see the plans.
Okay.
Yeah, I, 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 I think what we have is a, a little bit of confusion at this point. And see, if, if our deferring approval of this isn't gonna throw up any roadblocks to you doing, I mean, originally I was inclined to vote in favor of this and all, and then all these questions started coming up. But if our deferring a decision is not gonna throw up any roadblocks and you can still operate, which it sounds like you totally can, then I don't see the point of not having a more thorough record. So.
Yeah, and a- as, as Mr. Dwyer noted, I think the common, the common process is that, you know, we have an existing floor plan and then that we approve the existing floor plan. That's a little, uh, I mean, I know that we can issue, uh, w- we can issue a liquor license to a, an establishment that's looking to build and they're looking to build a location. But I think there's kinda two ways we can go on this, which is to wait to have updated plans or to wait till you actually construct, um, the building.
Whatever works.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I don't think we're at risk of, I don't think we're at risk of any negative impact on your business between now and, and, and here. Um, I appreciate you being proactive. Um, whi- which way do we wanna go? I can go both. I can go both.
No, I wa- I just wanna see the plans before they're done. I don't, I don't mind approving it in advance of the building.
Yeah.
I just would like to know what the plans are. And again, I thought I understood what the plans are, but now there's way too much doubt about what they really are.
You've, you've caused two of us to flip, so don't, don't flip yourself.
No, no. It wouldn't hurt to approve it now. I just, and now I'm just curious. Again, what I, I did ask a question right off the bat is that people are gonna be monitoring, you know? If there's an entrance or an exit, like the tent is right now, that you have to go in through a certain area, that's can easily be monitored. You start opening up three garage bay doors, that's a whole extra non-wall that has to be controlled. It has to be a controlled area. That's why
That's gotta be only one entrance way. There's a hostess, there's people watching, sitting right there. There's a front, there's a dusk right there when people comes in. And beside that, these doors, people, they're not gonna use it as entrance or exit. The garage door, the opening doors, these are just to get some air, but it's gonna be an exit sign, exit door, an entrance door for in and out. They're not gonna be used, these doors will not be used for people to go
That might not be your intent, but if they're garage doors and you can walk through
That's my intent and my rules because it's gonna be blocked.
Okay, well, that's
Planters and other things because these are not for people to use.
Okay, well, that's important. That's why we wanna see that because
In and out. So in and out, people, they have separate, separate door as the tent existing. The tent side is all open as, as existing as we're speaking now. It's all open, but no, nobody can get in from this opening. They have an entrance door, a way to get in and a way to get out, but not from the opening. These are blocked because just for the looks, fresh air to come in and out, and that's it. Not for the people, not for the public to use that as exit or entrance.
Yeah.
Understood.
Okay, um, do we need to, um, recess to a date certain? Do we need to give them a specific date today?
No, I think we can just re-advertise probably. Because I'll have to check the agendas going forward.
Yeah. Can we close a public hearing without taking it into action?
I wouldn't close it.
Yeah, so leave it open and then just basically recess tonight's public hearing and that you will work with
To be a date to be determined.
Yeah, you'll work the applicant, figure out a future date and then we'll come back.
It will also be dependent on
To be determined just means that we have to advertise again, as opposed to a date certain means you don't have to advertise.
Right. And it will be dependent on when he can get, uh, Mr. Mohammed can get plans in.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, I can get you, uh, a flo- floor plan as soon as possible, uh, from the engineer. That's an easy thing. That's not
Okay.
Problem at all.
Yeah.
Uh, 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 s- in two days, I could get it for you.
Yep.
But, um, coming back again for another hearing and we'll do some advertising again and we'll go through this process again. It's up to you.
Yeah, so I, I think the, I think the appropriate, we don't have a meeting next week. Uh, and so our next meeting is in November. And so I think that there's gonna be a need to coordinate with the town manager. Um, typically, the first meeting of the month, uh, is usually pretty packed. And so I don't know if we can commit tonight to the first meeting in November to a date certain. So we might need to just say, um, to a date to be determined, which very well could be the second meeting in November.
Well, we, we could, just to prevent the advertising, we could do it to November first as a date certain. If we can, and if we cannot do it, if we have to recess, we can open it and push it to the next day if, while we find out.
We can.
So you can certainly do that. And we could let the applicant know so he doesn't show up on that day. If we don't think we're gonna get to it,
Yeah.
we can make the date certain to November first, reopen it and then re- make the first motion to do it to a date certain if it has to be on the eighth.
Can you provide updated plans by the November first meeting?
Uh, absolutely. And next week, if you like, whatever. I know you have no meeting, but if you need to drop it off at the office?
Yeah.
And you folks can take a look at it and if you, you know?
Okay.
And study it.
I think for the applicant, like, it would be, um, helpful, what extent of plans are you looking for?
Yeah, I think what we're looking for is a floor plan. Uh, so I don't think we need your full construction set of documents. But I think what we're looking for is a floor plan that demonstrates how this ad- on area is gonna interact with the rest of the building. Uh, if you're noting that you have these open bay kinda doors, if you can provide some, uh, diagrams of what that's gonna, wh- what you're speaking of there, what other, other kinda controls you plan on having. I know you mentioned, what Mr. Alonso was alluding to was that even though you may put planters up in front of a garage bay door, it's not gonna stop someone from walking through those planters. And so kinda what those controls are that you have in place, that's gonna limit the, the mobility of your patrons to force them to say, hey, even though there's a planter here, I'm not gonna squeeze through there. I'm gonna go out this exit. So I think just a little, a higher level of detail. I know the construction documents is probably a bit too much. Um, but in that, in that set, you should have some, uh, on your A series of your construction documents, you should have some graphical or some, uh, depictions of what it's gonna look like in the architectural portion.
Like some renderings of
I was just scheduled with one page with everything thrown on it and
Sure.
Yep.
Is that, is that
One page works. It, it probably is one or two pages. Yep.
Yep.
Exactly.
That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you, miss, thank you, Mr. Mohammed. I think we need to take a motion to recess the public hearing to November the first, uh, and
Play, but continue.
To continue?
Continue the meeting to, to, I, I move that we continue the public hearing for IL four and O to November first at seven fifteen P M.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion?
Nope, I'm all good. Thank you.
All right, all, as many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, no.
Do you like me to drop it off sooner or to bring him in with me or do you need, you need to drop him off at the office?
Yes, as soon as you, you have them.
Oh, very soon.
If you ha- if with your architect or whoever your builders are, if you can have it digitally, that's easier. But if it's by paper, then, yeah, that's fine too.
No problem at all. We can do that.
Yeah, they do everything digitally these days, so they should have a PDF they can email.
Two thousand twenty-two.
All right.
Yeah.
How's business otherwise, Mr. Mohammed?
Very good.
Good.
Very, very good.
All right, so again, IL four and O's at four ninety-four Mass Ave. If you haven't gone, check it out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Very much.
All right. All right. To our, um, old business first, before we hit the workshop. Uh, reviewing special town meeting warrant articles. Sign the warrants and vote on recommendations.
Share.
This is just more, yeah, this is all his things that they sent over.
So there, you will see that they're now numbered articles. Finally made it to the numbering point in the process. And, um, I am making one recommendation about an, another order change related to, um, the Marshall Park article and the special purpose stabilization article. Uh, because they would be, um, dependent on how, what the decision is on the Marshall Park article. If those funds aren't used for that, they would be, um, recommended to be deposited into the special purpose stabilization account. So I thought the order should be that we discuss Marshall Park first and then whatever the decision on that is. Um, the town can either pass over the special purpose stabilization or put that funding into that account.
Okay.
So the way it is right now is the way you recommend it?
Yes.
Okay.
So originally, four was five, five was four.
All right. Are there actually available funds for this request for number four?
So, uh, right now I'm still working off estimates and in your drive, uh, because we're waiting on new growth to be certified. So that is the one remaining piece of, uh, the puzzle. Uh, the estimate is approximately twenty-two thousand. And, um, that will determine the, the bottom, bottom line as far as what, uh, is available.
All right, and the expectations for these funds to be made available immediately, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so as a, as a process, I think that we did have a request for, um, APDC to come before us this evening to discuss the changes that they had to, uh, the warrant article that they provided to us, uh, which is now article number?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Mr. Dwyer?
Lucky thirteen, Mr. Dwyer.
Colin Dwyer, seventy-six Main Street, APDC Chair. Um, uh, so I got the, uh, we, we did revise the bylaw in consideration of the comments that the select board made. And I'm wondering if you have had a chance to review those changes?
Yes. Would you mind us highlighting them for us this evening?
Were those emailed?
I'm sorry?
Were those sent around? The changes?
Yes, there's, there, we, there was a new version sent to Eileen Peterson on, well, this weekend.
No.
No.
It was not prepared. I see.
She was out of the office yesterday and today.
Ah, I see. Uh, well, I can read them over. They're not too long. Uh, if you can, I'll, I'll give you the copy that I have with me right now, so you can look over the format that we'd like to submit it in and
Are we able to make copies?
Yep.
Would you mind?
Okay, great.
Got any good jokes, Mr. Dwyer?
If they're suitable for public access, I don't know.
I'm messing with you while we're waiting for the copies here.
So a, uh, guy walks into a funeral and he walks up to the widow. Says, uh, can I have a word? She's like, sure. Plethora. Goes, thanks, that means a lot. Well, all right, my favorite joke lately is, uh, what do a hamster and a cigarette have in common? They're both perfectly harmless until you stick them in your mouth and set them on fire.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know this is a departure from the norm here. That was good humor. Thank you. So we're in receipt now of additional changes that you've made. If you wanna walk us through them. Uh, that the committee has made, if you wanna walk us through them.
Uh, so one change is that, uh, I, I think the, the shoulds and shalls and musts are cleared up now. We went with shall, uh, for better, for worse. Uh, that was an issue, um, if people aren't following along, that was an issue in the last draft that wasn't consistent. Uh, but we did wanna change shoulds to either must or shall to make sure that it, the bylaw stated that these things are things that you have to do. They're not optional. Uh, one comment that we got was that the, um, uh, as it is right now, there's nothing in the bylaw stating how soon the applicant will be informed if their application has been accepted. And that was in the rules and regulations, a separate document. Uh, but it, uh, it stated there five days, but that wasn't in the bylaw. That was requested by the select board. And so we put it into the language here that applications deemed incomplete by the APDC will be turned, will be returned to the applicant within five business days of initial receipt. The applicant will then be responsible addressing application deficiencies identified by the ATBTC prior to resubmital. Uh, so that'll be in the bylaw. Uh, and applications shall be submitted in accordance with the instructions on the application for certificate to alter. Uh, which again, that gives us more flexibility in terms of refining our process, like as, as we go along. I think right now there's a lot of people who find the application, uh, a little bit confusing. And so we like the ability to, uh, change, change that and basically, uh, put a lot of the procedural stuff onto the application and not in the bylaw.
Question for you. What are those instructions?
Uh, the instructions right now, uh, basically they, they tell you, if, if you look at the form, it says, um, to describe the project and there's a list of requirements, all, any and all of which will maybe waived. And I believe that is stated in the bylaw that we're, uh, able to waive those. But I think the form doesn't make it entirely clear, so that's another thing that we would like to work on is to improve that form.
Is, is your understanding that the APDC can modify the, that form? Um, and the instructions on that form at any time?
Uh, not at any time, no, but I mean, we, it is possible. We, it's possible to do it without a public hearing.
So it's possible to al- so it would be possible to alter those instructions without a public hearing?
I beg your pardon. I misspoke. Without going to town meeting, it would require a public hearing, though. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
We, we have not, the, the, some, the submission form is part of the rules and regulation. We have not, uh, amended that since its inception. Uh, I think you can see, um, can be submitted electronically, but one hard copy, we're getting rid of that. So that it's not in the bylaw that you have to submit a hard copy. We're gonna try to make things more and more electronic. Uh, in the following section, on, in section C, um, this was the thing that we talked about quite about bit last time about the, uh, the timeline and when exactly everything had to happen with the public hearing. And this is something that we really wanted to do was get rid of a lot of that language and And so the, the public hearing, it's still stated that it will be published fourteen days before the hearing happens. But all the language about the hearing being within forty-five days of the submittal, we struck that.
What, what relief does, you know, with these changes, what relief does an applicant have if the APDC determines that the application's not complete?
I don't know what you mean in terms of relief. They can, they can resubmit. And that has happened, that we've just informed them, look, this is not a complete application. We need this and this. And please submit this and then it'll be complete. So they don't have to, I mean, it's really at the beginning of the process, but they don't have to start all over. They can, often if they're just missing materials and we'd like to see a plan or a drawing or a photograph or something like that, they can just send that along. We can include it in the application and say, okay, this is what we need.
I, I guess what I'm asking is if the APDC can waive any or all the requirements for design, submittal and review, that how, in terms of timeline, one would have to assume that the APDC would have to meet, right? And go over the application, make a determination if the application's complete, make a determination of what they're going to waive before getting back to the applicant to say if your application's complete or not. Is that correct?
We would like to be able to do that, but we just, we don't have time to do that right now. Right now, we have to get it back within five days. So the chairman or somebody designated by him or her needs to just review the application and decide right there, yeah, we can, we can make a decision based on this information or not.
Okay. So I, okay. I think, I, okay.
It is a bit of an issue because we, yeah, it doesn't give us an opportunity to meet and deliberate on the application. What we do want is to be able to look at the application after it's been accepted and decide if this is a major or minor alteration.
Yeah.
That, that is something that we needed more time for. And the, basically, the thirty days that we have right now isn't really enough for a complicated
Yeah.
uh, application for us to review it and meet, discuss it and decide and proceed with a public hearing or say, no, this is a minor alteration. You don't need a public hearing. We're going to waive that.
Okay. So I, I, just, I'm, I'm not offering really any opinions. I'm trying to just understand. So let's say that I get, you know, you get an application from me. That the next step in the process is you have to determine if that application, you have to let me know if that application's complete. But in, in part of you deciding if the application's complete, you also have to decide if you're going to waive any of the requirements in the application, right?
That, yes, I could, I could do it right then and there. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. How does he? Okay. I'll offer my comments later, but I, I get it.
Just one point of clarification. Were you done, Mr. Jeffries?
Yes.
Okay. For these purposes, since, I mean, it's a very short window, five business days, so it becomes highly relevant. Or is Friday a business day for these purposes? Because in other words, town business doesn't get done on Friday. So it's a business day for the world, but is it a business day for Luenberg?
For the rest of the offices, Friday still counts as a business day.
Okay.
Does count as a business day, yes.
All right. So Friday is a business day. Okay.
I, I don't know if this was done inadvertently. But in, in C, letter subsection C, that you, the sentence you're adding at the beginning, upon receipt of the application, the APDC shall, shall, remember that word, shall review and hold a public hearing. So you're requiring yourself to hold a public hearing for every application, at least in that section.
Yes. And, and that is what the bylaw says, that every application requires a, a hearing. Though in the rules and regulations, we give ourselves the right to waive that.
Right. But you're, but that is not possible. So the rules and regulations cannot override a bylaw. That's the hierarchy, right?
Right.
So you can add mechanisms and procedures and everything that are not covered in the bylaw, but you can't supersede what the bylaw says. So the last sentence of B is, I'm unknown whether that also applies to C because it's not clear. It says, if appropriate, the APDC may waive all, any and all requirements for design, submittal and review. I don't know. It would seem it would not because it is in a separate section. I just wanted to alert you that. I am for the changes that you've made. I appreciate the work, the work that you and the, and the committee have done. But I just wanted to point that out to you, that you're, what seemingly to me, you're obligating yourself to have a public hearing regardless
Yes.
of the, how large or small the CTA is.
Yes. And I feel like that has always been an issue. As you can see, the, this top of section C, that was in the part that was struck out, shall hold a public hearing on the application. So we didn't change that. I, I've always felt that we needed to. Because that's always been a problem with the bylaw, that the bylaw says one thing, but our procedures say another.
Yeah. Well, your, your procedures are probably overreached. And the bylaw is the bylaw. You know, one of the, one of, what I was alluding to in my questions previously, I'll offer my opinion now. What I was alluding to in the question I was asking earlier is exactly what Mr. Alonso just brought up. Which is I, you know, the bylaw, unaltered, unaltered, you know, requires you to, requires the APDC to have a public hearing for every application. And it seems to be appropriate that you'd have a public hearing, you have the applicant in front of you, you discuss with them whether or not you're going to waive any requirements, whether or not the application's complete. If you get that done pretty quickly, you still have a ninety-day window to keep going through the process. And so the applicant, then the burden's on them to produce the remaining documents, right? What, what these changes say is, no, we as APDC get the ability to decide the requirements on the instructions. It's up to us only. And that we're going to decide if applications are, are complete. We're going to decide before a public hearing occurs what, what additional requirements we're going to require or not. But by the way, we're going to, we're going to have a public hearing upon receipt of the application.
Right.
It doesn't make sense to me. I just, I don't think that's clear enough.
I, I have to concur with you. I have to concur. I, I, I think it's, there are things about this bylaw that are just as bad as they were that have not been corrected. But a few things have been corrected. So I think it's still an improvement.
All right. So in C, which you, what you're saying is, is, as Mr. Alonso said, upon receipt of the application, you're removing the language that says the days. So I think you're providing an avenue for someone to argue that says, upon receipt of the application, the APDC shall review and hold a public hearing on the application. There's no allusion there to time.
Yes.
There's a sense of immediacy.
Yes.
And then said hearing to be noticed by an ad published in the newspaper, local circulation fourteen days or more before the hearing.
Yeah. So there is a time. You can't have it, they can't have it before fourteen days. So the, the earliest they can possibly have it is they get the receipt, they get the ad in the paper, and then on the fifteenth day, they can have the, the meeting. That's the earliest they can have it. But they have all the way up to the end. I mean, they have, they're changing it to seventy-five days. They have all the way to whenever.
I guess. But you're right. It does say upon receipt. There shall be.
Upon receipt, you, you shall have a meeting. That, that doesn't, you, in the next line, you specify a timeframe restriction because public hearings need to be noticed, which you do in the second sentence. Doesn't mean upon receipt, everybody's got to set the table and that's it. We're going to sit down and talk about it. But you're just obligated after you receive it. And it really should say after a completed application. Upon receipt of a complete application.
Yes.
Then we shall, doesn't say you have to review it then. Upon receipt.
So, but I have a question, Mr. Chair. So in section B, we're initially reviewing this application and providing feedback within five days to the applicant of whether the application's complete or not. But that still doesn't relieve the APDC of the obligation to hold a public hearing for that. So I, I guess my question is, if there's going to be an initial public hearing anyway, I think it's fine if they have an initial review and say, hey, this is coming, this is coming up. We've noticed some things are missing from the application. If you can bring them for the public hearing that's scheduled on such and such a date, that would be helpful. But I, in, in my view, this is still going to be a multi-step process. They're going to have an initial public hearing where they review the application and, and formally define the deficiencies or completeness of that application. And then still within that window, the applicant should still have the ability to amend that application for the next hearing where they dive into the details one, once it's completed. I mean, that means they'll, they'll have a hearing, they'll continue it based on or pending additional information for the applicant. So I guess where I'm going is, do we even need the initial five days? They review it and all, all that if we're just going to schedule a hearing anyway?
Well, I...
I mean, it's a, it's a courtesy, but I don't know that it's necessary.
May I attempt to answer? Sure. So if this, if this process, and in many ways it parallels the right request of first refusal, the clock doesn't start until there's a completed application. Not when somebody submits an incomplete application. There is no clock. So this, on C, the first sentence of C should say, upon receipt of a complete application, then the clock starts. So the five days is, is them telling you, you don't want it to sit for, until their next meeting, only to find out two and a half weeks later, wow, your thing is not complete. So the chair, as, as Mr. Dwyer has just said, the chair has the ability to review it quickly and say, okay, have you hit all the check marks to even make this a complete application? Once that determination is made, then the clock starts for C, not before.
This is where I disagree. I think the clock should start upon receipt of an application. If there's deficiencies, it should be noted at that first hearing. And then, for example, if they came into a case where the applicant could not get the changes and amendments to that application done within the seventy-five day window, I think it would be upon, the applicant, it would be their responsibility to request an extension of that, to extend it. Not on the APDC to try and cram everything in and say, hey, we're going to have our initial hearing. You know, we've noticed some discrepancies with this application. And then at that hearing, say, you know, how long do you think it will take you to get those? Is it thirty days? Is it, is it forty, forty-five days? And then schedule a hearing for that date when they can have the complete application and then hold the hearing.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, Mr. Dwyer, in that one. I, I, nothing you said I disagree with. And in addition to that, I think that, that, that then is the problem here. Which is that from one application to the next, how the APDC defines complete is going to vary. That there's not one definition. And so what's complete for applicant A is not complete for applicant B. And thus, with these proposed changes, like, you know, the concern is that applicant A, you know, who you say you only need five things, applicant B needs all, you know, all the full, the full gamut. So applicant A can get through the process quick. But applicant B, the clock never even starts for applicant B. Because you, you know, you're making a decision before they ever even can have a public hearing. So I, I don't, that I think is my concern previously about this process should be quick.
We do try to make the process quick, but your comments and scrutiny of the proposed changes have left me feeling like this amendment is not ready to go before town meeting.
Are you looking to withdraw?
I would. I would like to.
Okay. That's straightforward. You're looking to withdraw the article?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I, I don't think it's ready. I think all the points that you brought up are very valid concerns and that we really need to address them.
Was that a vote taken by the APDC?
No. No. With the, the APDC wished to go ahead and submit this. But as the representative, I don't, I just, I, I think you're right. I think it's not ready.
Yeah. I, I touching on that. Do you, as a point of order, do you, can you unilaterally decide on behalf of the APDC that he's withdrawing?
That's why I asked.
Yeah, right. No, no.
But, but we have the authority to not put it on. Which, which again, I have hesitated to use. However, this is the chair of the committee asking us in a public meeting to rescind it. Now, the point of authority of his, does he have the authority of the committee? Puts us in a weird spot, of course.
That's for him to decide.
When does it go to print? Tomorrow?
This week. Has to be signed this week. Yeah. There's, tonight, the decision is...
You know what?
So...
I, I am, I am inclined as to not overstep bounds and to have you not overstep bounds. I'm inclined to leave it on the warrant and have you guys say at town meeting you wish to pass it over. That's what I think is the better method.
You're right. That would be the better way to handle it.
I, I will sleep better of going that route.
Yeah. But I mean, a lot of people who live in the district are going to see this, right? I mean, we want to have a, I think we have a responsibility to provide a reasonable warrant to people. I think a lot of people will see this and it's going to raise some alarms. Because as we pointed out today, B is not consistent with C. And so it's not clear. And so, I mean, why, why cause that public anxiety if we don't need to?
Well, there's enough time, I, I don't mean to interrupt you before you're speaking, but and there's enough time for his committee, you know, the committee to speak and then say publicly that that's what their intention is and say it to everybody. Besides the fact that I don't think that people come to droves into special, first of all, they don't come to droves to special town meeting to begin with. And they certainly don't come in droves to speak on the APDC bylaws that are not budget items. So I don't think you're going to see people look at this and, you know, not be able to sleep at night because they, they're going to change section B and C. I, I really don't see you're going to cause any kind of clamor.
You'll also have another meeting before now in town meeting where you discuss the motions. And at that meeting, you can discuss, and the APDC could hold a meeting between now and then to formally say that they're asking the motion to be passed over.
That's what I would recommend to your committee. And you don't have to come here. You can submit it to the board as a letter of the decision so that we can read it before town meeting, special town meeting, so that everybody knows what the intention is.
Yes.
I still need to know what to print in the booklet. This version or the version that we have?
Well, this is the one that they've approved.
We did vote to approve this.
I would say this one.
Okay.
All right. We can, I mean, as, as part of, as part of the discussion, those, you know, what I wanted to raise to you was, was, was already said, those are my concerns. That I, I think the application, the, the, maybe it would be helpful that if we're going to say instructions on the application for certificate to alter that maybe we can just list the instructions on the bylaw itself. I'm not as comfortable with that language. And then with these, you know, instructions can be a hop on one leg. I mean, I'm, obviously, you're not going to do that. But I'm just saying, like, there's such a huge range for what these instructions can be. And then the wave of ability of these instructions before a public hearing, which again means that what's, a, a complete application does not have a definitive definition. That, that's where I, I think there's going to be some issue. I mean, I, you know, I think you had me a little bit more supportive tonight than I've been thus far, especially with B. I, I think that the intent of what you're looking at with these changes makes sense to me. You know, I, I just don't like the idea that, you know, I much prefer every application gets a public hearing. You have it pretty quick. You let the applicant know, hey, we don't think this is a complete application. And if you don't make these corrections within this window, we're going to have to deny this because for being an incomplete application. To me, that's a better process. It puts the burden back on the homeowner, but it keeps everything moving forward. But, you know, when I said, what's the remedy or the, you know, how, how does, how does someone, whatever, however I phrase the question about, you know, what if, what if you guys say it's incomplete, then what are their options? Their options are to be in limbo. And to be like, well, I don't understand why you're saying it's not complete. And then there's no, you know, and it just seems that a public hearing process keeps the whole thing moving, but...
Well, I don't think it changes the criteria. So I, I, I would disagree with that, that objection. I, I am for the five-day waiver and not starting the clock. However, the point that I would definitely agree with Mr. Jeffries on is that the submission process has to be as objective as possible. There has to be, like, when we go through the right of first refusal, there is a checklist. And either the person checked off the boxes or they didn't. And there's very little wiggle room for, you know, for gray area, right? And you need to make that. I can't, a, a non, a disinterested party has to be able to look at this and, and say objectively, they either met the criteria you wrote down or they didn't. And it can't be like, oh, well, this one's a little different. If that's what's happening, that's bad. I'll just say that. So it has to be objective. So, it has to be objective. These are the things you have to provide us. And that's probably what you need to work on, even though that's not part of the bylaw, it's just going to be referenced when you finally submit it, you know, hopefully in the spring. But I would say work on that, because the submittal process has to be objective, to Mr. Jeffries' point. You can't, it can't be guessing. The applicant can't be like, "Well, Person A did it for this, and there's nothing in the rules that say they should have submitted something different than me, and so, I need to know what the rules are."
If I could just raise a couple of points. I don't want to get into the substance of it now, since it seems like that's going to be moot, but, except for a little bit. There is still no, if I'm reading this correctly, no tr, you truncated the whole process down to 75 days, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, but there is no sort of trigger, you know, as I said last time, while I wouldn't necessarily vote to recommend against approval, if there were no such trigger, I'd be more inclined to vote for it if there were a specific, within a certain number of days, we are going to have a hearing, not, not, if there's going to be a public hearing, not, you know, that it could go out to 14 days theoretically prior to the 75th day. Just, just a point. But I also just think in general, it's just like wipe the table clean of this, since it's not coming up at this town meeting, just as a general point, to get it in earlier, probably for the spring, because I expect, I suspect we're going to be having the same kinds of discussions in the spring as we are now, and then, so we don't run out of clock, like, hit it in like February or March, so that we just don't, you know, like, we're just being default, we're running out of time here. We ran out of time to, to clean it up, so.
I would also offer personally, that if, if you guys want, as you work on it, you know, before, you know, town meeting in the spring, if you're continuing to do that, if you want to bounce something off me, I'd be more than happy to review it before you bring it public, just to have a once-over, if that's even important to you, I'll just offer.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
The only, as you guys go back, the last thing I'll note is in the last section, which we really didn't discuss at all, but you, you have another conflict here too, in which, you know, the language says that the APDC should fail to submit a written determination within 75 days of the receipt of an application, of a complete application?
Complete application.
Again, all of those ones should say "complete," right?
And I'm, I'm not in favor of the "complete" language, but the, the last thing I'll, I'll leave you with is, you know, currently in C, the language says, "Within 45 days," and the change, and that's, that was what the current bylaw says. Over 45 days, the application's submittal, you guys are looking to scratch that, and with language that starts with "upon receipt of the application." So, if I were to say to you, "I'm going to give you $100 upon receipt of an application" or $100 within 45 days, which one sounds sooner?
Upon receipt, sure.
All right. And I think that that's, that's part of the problem, is that upon receipt sounds quick. It sounds right away. But the way that this is worded, you really have 75 days, right? That upon receipt, well, minus 14. Or, I make, make sure I'm math, you really have 75 days. Yeah, you have 75 days.
Right, but you have, but the early, but-
Early, it could be 14.
You can't do it in 14 days.
Yeah. But really, upon receipt means 75 days. And you're looking to change language that says, "Within 45 days," to "upon receipt," but "upon receipt" meaning 75 days. That, to me, is problematic language. It sends a wrong message of timeliness. So.
All right.
I have to concur with that too. I, I mean, I would just, I would just eliminate that and try and just find, I mean, basically, the idea we want to convey is that receipt of an application engages or triggers the obligation of the APDC to review and hold a public hearing, something that goes along nose lines rather than the "upon receipt." I do agree that that conveys a sense of immediacy, that, you know, it's just, is not only totally ambiguous. What, what, what does that mean, "upon receipt"? Is it a day? Is it a week? Is it?
Well, it's, uh, these are very good points that bring up, that illustrate how different people read this and understand it very differently than the way we do, so.
Yeah. Right, exactly. And, and, and to Mr. Alonso's point, it has to be, I think, certain aspects of it have to be subjective, or objectively understood in pretty indisputable ways. You know, with, without a lot of room for subjectivity, there's sometimes subjectivity built into these processes, but, you know, where it doesn't have to be, where it's unnecessarily ambiguous and subject to subjectivity, I think those should be eliminated, they're just problematic.
So, I just want to offer my, a final comment here. You know, one of the things that I want to highlight here is, we've had a lot of discussions about APDC, but what we haven't talked about is the substance of the actual bylaw. That you, you're not getting a lot of disagreement to the substance of the bylaw, in the sense of what has been created in terms of the Architectural Preservation District. The conflict is in us figuring out how the APDC operates, right? That that seems to be where we're having the, the conflict, is trying to, or still trying to iron out those details to make them work. So, that is a success in many ways, that, you know, there's not, you're not, you're not facing opposition broadly to the concepts of having an Architectural Preservation District. It's just how does the APDC operate to help protect or promote that district? That seems to be creating a lot of concern. That there, you know, there is a need for some review, I was going to mention it later on tonight, but if you guys are willingly going to be taking this on, you know, there were some authors of this bylaw, Mr. Lockwood, Mr., Mr. Damon McQuade, and I think that there's awareness that there's, you know, perhaps a need to kind of take a look at this, that if that's a process you guys are going to undertake, I was going to propose tonight that we do it as a bylaw review committee, that we ask them to kind of take another look at the APDC bylaw, specifically, the section as it refers to the APDC. But if you guys are willingly taking that on, I would encourage you to, you know, solicit some support for Mr. Alonso, who's already offered, and also reach out to those authors, again, Nathan Lockwood, Damon McQuade, who are really critical to the process, to see kind of what feedback they can also offer to the process. So, that way, we continue to protect the core of what's there, but make this process something that we all can agree to a little bit more.
Well, it seems like we have a little bit of momentum moving forward, and we have made some ground, so hopefully, we can keep this process going and be well-prepared for the spring town meeting. Like I say, you're right, we did agree to submit this, so I think, you know, that there might be disagreement among the Commission as to whether to pass over it or not, but that will be my recommendation.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's continue with the special town meeting warrant articles. All right. So, are there any that we have not voted to accept?
You voted to accept all of the ones that are before you. You just have to vote on your recommendations, with the exception of the Personnel Committee article, because that one was, the recommendation was voted on.
Okay. Got it. All right. So, the easiest, the quickest way to do this, team, is to go by one by one, and whoever wants to kind of take the point in making all these motions. But the motions, at our last meeting, we did accept, and the motions tonight are motions to recommend approval or recommend disapproval.
Or defer.
Or defer. So, recommend approval, recommend disapproval, or defer. It's always best to do positively worded motions, and that way, we can crank through these pretty quick. Are you taking the notes?
Yep.
Got it.
Mr. Chair, is it your intent to have the bylaw, the articles read in full again? No?
No.
Okay. Well, to the extent that you need me to read anything, let me know.
All right.
They're shared on the-
Yeah, they're on, they're on the screen, and everyone at home can see them. So, all right. So, we're going to kind of crank down the list. Article one.
The, just for the Board's knowledge, and this is in your Google Drive as well, the changes to that budget adjustment article include the elimination of the request by the Historical Commission for the $12,500, because they will not be able to apply for that grant for the 50% match, so that's removed from the budget adjustment article. The employee engagement survey is, instead of $15,000, it will be no more than $10,000. And the Assessors Administration article is $45,000. I had last meeting, it was $60,000. We received the bids and our most advantageous proposer, that is what we'll need for that expense. And lastly, the new submission is to cover some additional time for an employee that's been out on medical leave, that will be, continue to be out on medical leave, that we look, are looking to hopefully bring someone in to cover that time period.
Okay. And all this is in the chart of changes?
Yes. So, the, and-
With the highlights?
So, the other one remaining cost, like I mentioned, is the new growth figure, which is also highlighted in that chart, which is the $22,000. So, everything's dependent upon that number.
Okay.
But that will be submitted this week, and we should receive certification, I would assume, by next week.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Through you to the Town Manager, are these, what is the likelihood that these numbers will change between now and town meeting?
The budget adjustment articles will not. The top numbers, the only number that's likely to change is the new growth. So, if they don't certify it at that amount, that would be the only number that would change. And therefore, the bottom line.
Right. So, I just always, I mean, not that I'm going to vote to disapprove this anyway, but I'd rather know what the actual number is and if the number possibly is going to change. I'd prefer to defer, just to hear the final number.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the total number you're saying is not going to change, or it could change.
The bottom line, if the new growth number changes, the bottom line changes.
Yeah.
But the rest of the numbers will not change.
All right. Article one, any other questions, or is there a motion, or is there a motion with a recommendation?
I would make a motion to defer to town meeting, so we can hear the final numbers, including the final new growth number.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, we have deferred our recommendation, Article one. Article two.
So, that payment prior to your expense is noted on that chart as well. That has not changed, and that's the final number.
Is there a motion with a recommendation?
Make a motion to recommend approval for Article two.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Select board recommends approval of Article two. Article three.
Article three, you have an executive session tonight on this article, so there's no additional information at this time.
All right. We can make a decision on this one in executive session. Article four.
I need to print this in the Word though, so I would say, I would recommend you defer it, and then you announce your recommendation at the next meeting. Maybe we'll vote on it the next meeting.
Article three?
Yes.
Yes, I would concur.
Walk me through that again, because we're having executive session about this.
Right, but we can't take, we can't discuss this in executive session.
Got it. All right.
Is there a motion to defer? Article three.
So, moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are deferring our recommendation, Article three. Article four.
Because we don't have a final number, I would recommend we defer on Article four. Recommend deferring.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All right. All in favor of the recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. We are deferring on Article four. Article five.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you want to discuss that article, since the Chair of the Parks Commission is present?
On Article four?
Yes.
Um, what, to discuss, we don't have a funding source. What is there?
The, just to discuss, the last meeting, she was coming back, and we were just-
Oh. I didn't mean to skip over you. If you'd like to come forward, Anna, and speak to this.
Good evening, on the Lockwood 91 Main Street. I'm the Chair of the Parks Commission. So, I was here because at the last meeting I was here, I said I was going to come back, so. So, I did. But the goal was that Heather and I would work on figuring out the right sum that we actually needed, because we had a right range, and also, the funding source and where we were, you know, could we fund that. And I think Heather, we did work on what we think it could be the total amount, and I think Heather, maybe you can speak, because you had the formula, you helped us with that. I'm relying a lot on Heather, by the way.
Show it all.
Right. Which is a good thing, versus just showing up with an article, "Hey, we want to, you know, money."
So, when we looked at percentages and what's needed for the additional engineering costs, and this is also working with the Facilities Director as well, and his expertise, the, the range is probably between $150,000 and $200,000 for the engineering costs. By all estimations, we're going to have around $186,000 available, based on the numbers tonight. And the previous article still has about $10,000 for engineering costs. So, combined, those two sources would cover the additional engineering costs.
Right. And that will put us where we need to be to really, you know, develop the engineering and then go out and start asking for money from everybody else, which is the goal. So, that's, yeah. But I really want to thank Heather and, and her team and Paul, who's been a great addition, for working with us and helping us figure out, because, you know, otherwise, we really would not know how to go about it, so, thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Yeah, so that's the update that I promised, and I did come back for that.
Sorry to make you wait till 8:30, I didn't realize.
No, that's okay, you know? I appreciate you guys just giving us the time.
Yeah, if I knew you were speaking to her, we would have, we would have front loaded-
I'm, I'm okay.
What else is she going to do on Tuesday?
I know. I probably will watch you guys on Facebook, anyway. All right. Thank you.
Don't try to charm us.
All right. We left off, thank you, Anna. Was it five?
Five.
All right. And we deferred on five?
No. I just wrote it. I'm guessing you-
You're guessing that we're deferring on five?
Can we have a number?
No.
This would be whatever the source, if it doesn't go to Marshall Park, would go to the Special Purpose Stabilization. So, the estimates tonight are on 186 available. But, again, that's all dependent on the new growth.
I move to defer Article five, the recommendation on Article five.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, we are deferring on Article five. Article six.
Recommend approval for Article six.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's a motion, second. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. We are recommending approval of Article six. Article seven.
Recommend approval for Article seven.
Second.
Recommend approval, Article seven. Recommend approval, article seven. Um, any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We recommend approval of article seven. Article eight.
So this is the article regarding the buyback of time by firefighters that were, um, had on-call time, uh, that are now, now full-time firefighters. Um, so what I did learn is that there, in order to obtain, uh, estimate for the impact of the assessment, we would need to put together, um, a large amount of data based on those years of service on pay, our payroll records and all the shifts in time by month of each of those years for each of those individuals. So, um, that, I am assuming it's going to take some time. I'm going to find that out from payroll, how long that would take. And once it's submitted, um, I took, talked to the executive today at Worcester County Retirement, and he said he's not sure it would be able to be done by their actuary in time for our town meeting. Just because, uh, this is their busy time in year two with the, guess, the reports that they're doing. So, um, that is the update on that, so.
Is anyone going to be retiring until now and, and May?
It's possible.
Okay. If this is approved, then the answer is more likely yes. Is that fair?
It probably would influence some, or, you know, if it benefited them to retire now versus later.
What is, although we don't have the exact numbers, what is our assumption on the financial impact?
I couldn't have them to guess what the, yeah. I know a lot of other, um, I've talked to one other community that said, you know, it was really, it would be almost impossible to, um, guess that cost without going through an extensive process like we're talking about right now. So that community didn't go through that, that process of doing a scenario, but.
And they approved.
Mm-hmm.
And what did it cost them?
Uh, talking to Worcester County today, they've only had one person out of the, um, region apply for it, out of the communities that have adopted it. So I'm not sure who that, where that person is from, what community, so. It, it would only cost the, the town, um, I think if that person retired earlier.
I just feel, I have to say that I'm not ever comfortable, I mean, I deferred things for prior years. You know, expand, not prior years expense, but I mean, like the budget adjustments, that I have most of the numbers in front of me because I want to know the number. To be asking for something that's going to impact the budget and be told by, you know, the town manager and through you.
I'm not saying you should.
No, no, I understand that. No, no.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is that what's being presented to the board for recommendation and what's being presented to special town meetings to make a decision on something that everyone agrees may have budgetary impact, financial impact. But the town manager and the finance director and our Worcester Retirement, nobody has even a, a hint of an idea what that cost might be. I don't understand how we have ability to vote on that, except emotionally, which seems to be not a great way to vote.
You know I support article eight, um, but, um, I, I agree with you.
You know, I think the, um, board and finance should have that information before they take a vote of whether, to vote in favor.
Do we have a reasonable expectation that, that there's a high probability that we'll, I'm, I'm giving you too many what-ifs. Is there a high probability that we will have the information by special, in light of what you just said, is do you think there's a high probability that we'll have this information by special town meeting?
I think it will be dependent on how quickly we can gather that data to provide to Worcester County. And from there, it's out of our hands. I don't, even, it's out of Worcester County because they're dependent on an actuary, which is hired out by them as well.
So the answer is?
I would recommend defer, deferring this article. And, um, I've also spoken with the lieutenant, um, to, to look at what are the possibilities of delaying it to?
That's what my next, I'm good. So we're thinking along the same lines, because that was my next thing. It's like, how would they feel about just deferring this to annual town meeting?
Yeah.
So he's going to talk to the, the affected parties and, yeah, and get back to me.
So then I would make a motion that we defer our recommendation to town, uh, a special town meeting.
Second.
Uh, as a matter of question, when we defer, we write in the booklet, the majority decision. So it's not a vote, right? I'm not going to support deferral. So it's not like a four to one or three to one, it's just deferred, right?
No, unless there's, um, an abstention or opposition. So the, it, it won't denote unanimous votes, but if they were.
Even on deferrals.
Right.
Yes.
So anything that doesn't show a vote was, is unanimous. And then anything that's not unanimous, regardless of approval, disapproval, or deferral would be shown as a vote, yes. And again, this leaves the, the, I mean, again, I'm, I'm very clear, this leaves us the ability to make a decision. If they get it in time, then I'll vote on it if I know what the number is.
Right, and the town moderator asks with all the deferrals with the boards, and you can take a vote at that time, at town meeting.
All right. I'm, I'm, I'm more inclined to support removing it or saying no, but, uh, I'll support the deferral. There, there's a motion, there's a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, those opposed, no. All right. Article nine. I think we're deferring.
We did that already. No, we, we've recommended approval on that one already.
Yep. Article ten. And this is regarding the, um.
The line item veto on capital planning items.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to recommend disapproval.
Second. Any other discussion? All right. This is a negative motion. Um, all in favor, support disapproval. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Um, I didn't hear your vote, Todd. Those opposed, no?
No.
Okay. All right. We are three to one to zero, recommend disapproval. Article, um, I'm sorry, Todd. I gave you the opportunity, I don't know if I gave you the opportunity for any additional discussion.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Sorry, what was that? Three?
Three.
Three to one.
Three, one, zero. Or three, one, one, right? Because one abstention. I don't know how you, I don't know how you're accounting for Heather.
She wouldn't be in the vote.
Okay, three, one. Article eleven.
Move to recommend approval.
Is there a second? All second. Second. Any additional discussion on eleven? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, no. I didn't hear you, Todd.
Uh. It was aye.
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, the recommend approval, uh, four to zero, article eleven. Article twelve. We're putting this up here, so I'm assuming that we're.
Hold on. Well, I would.
I'd recommend deferral.
Is there?
I'm fine with a deferral. If not, I'm going to recommend disapproval. Again, I do not believe that, that this is a prudent action at this time. Personally.
Do you want to make that motion?
I would move to recommend disapproval.
Second.
Any other discussion? This is an article that, that we put forward.
Right, so, may I just make a comment?
Yeah.
Why not remove the article?
Well, right. I'm, I'm fine with that, too.
Well, let's take this vote.
Well, no, I mean, I, I'd, I'd prefer that we remove it, actually, than vote against it. Especially since it looks, it looks kind of odd, especially as you phrased it, Mr., Mr. Chair, that, you know, yeah, we put it on there. If we're voting against our own article, it would be, makes sense, actually, to, if we're going to vote that way, to just remove it.
I'm not voting against this.
Okay.
All right.
Well, then, perhaps. Yeah, perhaps that should just be a matter of the, a part of the public record, that there was a split vote on it.
Well, you know. I guess my thinking is, we just had a discussion with, with the chair of the APDC, and he said he was going to go back to the APDC and, and get their input. Uh, that was my reasoning for.
That's article thirteen.
Oh, that's article thirteen.
This is twelve, where we want to override their denial for the Ritter Building.
This is where we can install energy, energy efficient windows at the Ritter Building. Because nothing, you know, I don't want to get into it, but yeah, no, this is our request to install energy efficient windows at the Ritter Building that was denied by the APDC, uh, the reason being that the windows that we currently have are serviceable.
And it was after having gone to their, their discussion, where they discussed this a couple of weeks ago, and town manager was there, and the facility, new facilities director was there, they made very valid points about, you know, our ability to show that the costs, they, they weren't against it. If they, we can show them that the restoration is going to be, you know, orders of magnitude higher, they weren't against that, but they didn't want to be the lead that, okay, we're just going to claim them because they made claims that, well, you know, energy efficiency is a tricky thing. There are things that could be made energy efficient, even with the original windows, and that we should, and that other places have done this. I personally, again, are, are willing to take them to say, okay, well, let's get that. The facilities director seemed to agree. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he was like, okay, we can go through that proposal period. And I think we owe it if we're going to have a, a committee that's going to be in charge of an architectural preservation district that the town voted in. I think it's a serious question, and I think overriding it in, you know, three months' time or two months' time was, whenever it was decided. When was it decided?
June, the end of June.
End of June, okay, so, whatever. I just don't think it's, I, I think the things that they're asking us for are not unreasonable.
In my opinion, um, you know, I, something I said, uh, in a meeting I had with the resident on Saturday is that I said, you know, probably seventy-five percent of the properties that I manage are historic properties. And I know I come across to some as like antihistoric preservation, but it's exactly what I do for a living. I mean, in addition to a lot of other stuff, I do, it's not all historic buildings. I'm not going to pretend like it is. It's not. But it's a big chunk of, of what I manage. And energy efficiency, even the Mass Historical Commission, uh, which I, which I'm about to put in, we're about to put in five hundred thousand dollars of windows in fourteen units that were all built in nineteen thirty-eight. Mass Historical Commission is all in support of it. Because they understand that energy efficiency is what we need as a civilization period. That, that, that's a must-have. And so if you can maintain a look, um, and also increase efficiency of windows, that's the way to go. I, I understand the argument about storm windows. In my experience, it's just simply not true. That yes, you can get more efficiency utilizing storm windows. It, it is not compared to a modern window, not by a long shot. So I am, I am in the, whatever we need to do to increase efficiency and decrease our carbon footprint, I am all for. And, and aesthetics take a second seat to me. So I'm, I'm in favor of, of us overriding the APDC and, and moving forward with article twelve.
I'm definitely not in favor, there was a discussion of removing the article. I'm definitely not in favor of that. But I am with Mr. Alonso. I have a, I think we need to respect and defer to these, uh, other, uh, boards. They exist for a reason, and I don't want to use, for lack of a better term, it's a crude term, but like, you know, nuclear option, that's like a last resort. And I don't think we're there yet. I don't think, I don't think this entire process has exhausted itself, so.
So, so, i- if I may characterize your, your positions, you'd prefer to wait? And then if we can't come to a resolution, maybe bring this back up at annual town meeting?
Yes. I'm not saying they will never use this. I'm just saying that what they've asked for as, as a, as a, uh, response to our request to extend it is submit, submit, you know, what that would be, what it would be to restore them, the ones in place.
Give them an apples-to-apples comparison.
There was also some discrepancy about the findings of asbestos in the caulking, and the town manager has provided. She didn't have it at that meeting readily at hand, but she has provided those findings to the APDC, which we'll also weigh into it. Again, they said they didn't see anything that had the findings for some reason, and I don't know, wasn't part of the package, I don't know. But we have provided it to them. So there's a discussion, it's ongoing. And, yeah, I'd like to go through the process of seeing what this is. Not saying I'll never use this, but I don't, I think it's premature here.
There, there's a presumption that every window that's installed pre-nineteen fifty has asbestos. Uh, I, I'm surprised that the Architecture Preservation District is not aware of that presumption.
That's a presumption, though, but we don't know that.
Yeah, well, I'd have to see a case where it's not true, but we do know for sure that, that it's, that it's true. I think they wouldn't accept that presumption or, or the statement. Um, they wanted proof. Okay, so we have a, w- w- we have a motion to.
Recommend disapproval.
We have a motion to recommend disapproval.
I'm seconding that.
There's a second for that. All right. Any other discussion? So, um, again, this is a negatively worded motion, so all in favor, support disapproving, recommendation of disapproval. All in, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no?
No.
No.
There you go.
So we are.
Those, two to two.
So I'm going to word this motion differently. Um, I move to recommend approval of article twelve.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no?
No.
No.
All right. So now we need to decide, do we want the positively worded or the negatively worded?
Well, there's no, there's no, there's no recommendation.
Yeah, so the response is no recommendation.
Yep. Or deadlock recommendation. I don't know how you want to say it. So two to two. I would put two to two, no recommendation.
All right.
So is that a, just, I mean, effectively, procedurally, that effectively is a, well, it's not a deferral. It's just going to be open season. I mean, we, we just, that's it, it's just going to be debated at town meeting, that's it. Right, right, right. Right, right, right. No, 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 I understand that. I'm just.
So, all right, next, yeah.
I'm sorry, just, no recommendation is usually a motion, though, meaning, like, you would make a motion to provide no recommendation.
Uh, it's a result, though, though, too, right? I mean, two to two. I don't think.
Well, two motions didn't pass. Two motions didn't pass, so we, we effectively have no recommendation. We, I guess we could say defer. I'll make a motion that we, I'll move that we defer to town meeting.
Second.
Is this a deferral, though?
Well, then we'll have a full.
Well, we'll have a five. Won't have a deadlock unless somebody abstains.
All right. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any additional?
I don't know if I like that motion, but that, that sounds like active acquiescence, whereas I don't think that's what we have.
Well, we also have an even number of board, because we don't have a full board.
How about a motion for a non-recommendation? Is that what you're essentially saying?
That's what she's saying, that we.
All right, so would you be willing to withdraw the motion to?
Sure.
All right.
I withdraw anything that gets us past this article. In the name of God, please.
I, I will now make a motion to make a non-recommendation.
I'll second that. I don't even know what that means, though.
I don't even know what that means.
I thought you're, you're not making a recommendation.
But I, I want to make a recommendation. But the result is that we can't make a recommendation. I think, I think.
Well, I, I'd prefer to defer and then have the full board vote at special town meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
I'd prefer that over no recommendation as well.
And you might have an answer from the APDC with the additional information the facilities director is trying to get them.
I will reassert the motion to defer to town meeting.
All right.
Second.
There's a second. Motion and a second to defer to town meeting. Any additional discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no?
I'm going to, uh.
Lou, are you kidding me?
No, I'm not. Uh, I, I'll tell you what, I'll do the most neutral thing I can do, and I'll abstain from the vote.
All right. All right. I will say that typically how we vote tends to mirror, for the most part, what happens, a lot of what happens at town meeting. And when we're split, town meetings usually pretty split. All right.
But you have to admit, that was a fun one.
Uh, no. All right, article, article thirteen, um.
Move to defer.
Second.
Okay. Um, we're deferring an article that we, that we know they're going to ask, or we think they're, they're going to ask to pass over.
Well, it's not passed over. That's going to be an active motion.
Got it.
So when they pass over, then I'll recommend, I'll, I'll recommend approving passing over.
Got it. This is going to be a three to one vote here. Uh, and all in favor, was, who, who was the second?
I was.
Okay. Yeah, any additional discussion? All in favor of the recommendation to defer, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Um, the, we have deferred to town meeting. Three to one. Article fourteen, uh, this is with the zoning map for, um, for one ninety-nine Mass Ave, the citizen's petition that we heard last week. Did we receive any additional updates on this? Any additional information from the applicants? No. All right. Do we want to, is there a motion? Is there a motion for article fourteen? Or do we want to have a discussion on this first?
Well, I, 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 I'm not going to make a motion on this because it's a citizen's petition, so I'll, I'll allow, you know, to put a deferral, but as I said at the meeting last week, I'm, any kind, any kind of spot zoning like this where we're just changing something with one property with no public hearing and no anything, I'm against, so.
Yeah. I'm, I'm opposed to article fourteen. I'm a no. I recommend disapproval.
They'll have a public hearing for the planning board.
Right. Does that public hearing require notification to all the butters?
No.
No. No, so then I'm not, again, I, there's, there's like fifteen to seventeen or butters or something that are going to be affected by this change. And I'd like to know that they know. Now, sure, you can make the argument, politicians always make the argument, but everybody gets the, the town warrant, and then I would question them, how many people read the town warrant? So that's not notification, you know? So I, I just would like to know. And now all of a sudden, how, how many other properties, when this, when this property line was cut in half or cut in pieces because of that line, how many other properties along the way are in there in that same position where they're gonna be like, okay, well, I wanna come, put my thing into, like, what is the, what is the domino effect of this? I just wanna know what that is.
Because we have zoning, when you look even, when you look at all the maps, sewer service area, that, that cuts across people's properties. Um, you know, same thing with zoning, that it does split parcels in, in, in half, so. I, I wholeheartedly agree with you, that it, it becomes a onesie-twosie who has the most friends they can bring to the meeting. And, and that's not how we should zone, in my opinion, so.
Especially, especially going from residence to commercial. If somebody said, I have a commercial thing and I wanna make it residence, I'd be like, okay, well, that's fine, you're taking away a lot of options. Here, you're opening up a lot of options, and, and a seventeen-acre parcel is a fairly sizable parcel about what could be behind there, so these people could be faced with, you know, anything, I don't know.
And, and I think, as I mentioned last week when they were here, um, that I think that there was, there are, there are opportunities to revise this to allow for those, to mitigate those concerns. Like, they could have asked for, you know, a buffer around this area of so many feet. Um, that, to me, it makes it a little more, you know, palatable, um, but the idea of a commercial property now being right against your backyard and you, you know, and these homes in that area have, have gone up in value, or, you know, as many have. But those especially, I've noticed, um, have gone up in value. So I'm really concerned about, as you said, Mr. Alonso, that, you know, someone's looking at the backside of a Walmart, not that that's gonna go in there, but. My experience developing property, and I'm sure, uh, I would assume, Mr. Dwyer, you're gonna, you're gonna second me on this one. Typically, when someone's asking for a zoning change, they have a plan. Um, that they have an idea of what they want. And so they need the space. Uh, I would assume that they would need the space. Usually zoning happens as a result of a, a plan. Um, so.
Or to make it more attractive for sale.
Or to make it more attractive for sale. Usually, though, it's, it's a specific buyer that's interested, and they're like, if you change the zoning, then I'm all on board for this, you know? I recommend disapproval. I move to recommend disapproval of Article fourteen. No second. Is there another?
Joe, for purposes of discussion, I'll second. I did say some things that they could certainly bring to town meeting, potentially, you know? Evidence that they, that there was discussion and every, every member was notified, or if they get a signature list by headless and all the property owners around it don't care, then, then that's fine. If all the property owner signed something that says, I am in support of this being fully commercial, that would change my mind.
Well, and, uh, since our last meeting, I had an opportunity to drive by the site, and I observed it, and, and they were, um, exactly right in saying they're using a good portion of that property that isn't zoned commercial for commercial purposes and have been for, for quite some time, which brings us to the, the point that, uh, Mr. Franco was making, that, that they may have, uh, some other avenues to pursue other than town meeting to, to, uh, get the use that they want.
By the same token, we have people who have built on and encroached on conservation property that don't have that. So I don't, I don't think there's, I, I really don't think that they're, and I'm not an attorney, but I, I would think that using something out of the district for something you shouldn't is just, is, is never grandfathered in, because you were have some kind of squatter's rights and you were doing it. I think you should just say thank you and nobody complain, and just go along your way, personally, but I don't think that you're gonna say, hey, I've done it so long, so by, by that avenue, the town has forfeited their right to zone the area. Because it's a town, they'd be, oh, this is not a residence against another residence where, hey, I've had my driveway on your property for thirty years, between two privately owned. This is, this is a town enforcement of a district, a zone, a, a, you know, a planning zone that I don't think anybody's use can override.
And when they were a dealership, you couldn't even see back there, that you can, where you can now see, so, you know? I, I trust that they're honest in their presentation, that they were just unaware.
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I think so, too. I don't wanna give anything nefarious. I think they just didn't know, and I, I take them at their word. But now that we do know.
All right. Your, your request, Mr. Alonso, is you'd prefer to defer. Is that also?
I wanna hear, I wanna hear what they have to say. I mean, without any additional information, and without anything coming forward, I will actively speak against this article. But I'd rather not have it printed and give them the time to say, you know, give me some evidence that the people around you are okay with it.
All right, I withdraw my motion.
So I make a motion to defer to town meeting.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. All right, motion passes. Article fifteen. Article fifteen is the request basically to move town meeting from the first Saturday in, uh, May to the, I believe, first Saturday in April. And, uh, commencing at seven AM, now, annual town meeting should be held on the third Saturday commencing at seven AM. So it would move the, um, let me read this thing, because I, I wanna make sure I say this right.
Would you wish, you wish for me to read it, or?
Uh, no, I, I got it.
All right.
Uh, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of Lunenburg entitled Town Meetings as follows. By deleting from section eighty-one point two entitled Meeting and Election Dates, the sentence is, "The annual town meeting shall be held on the first Saturday in May commencing at nine AM, and all required reports shall be made at that time. The annual town election shall be held on the third Saturday in May commencing at seven AM and ending at five PM." And substituting the following sentences therefore. "The annual town meeting shall be held on the first Saturday in April commencing at nine AM, and all required reports shall be made at that time. The annual town election shall be held on the third Saturday in April commencing at seven AM and ending at five PM, or take any other action, uh, thereto." So, um, my concern is the third Saturday in April is always right after school vacation or right before school vacation, just as a note. That I don't, you know, that's when a lot of people take vacations in April. Um, I don't, I don't see that as being an opportune time to try to have a town type thing, and I know I usually try to take a vacation around that time, because my birthday's in that range. Um, so I usually take a vacation as well. I don't, I, I find that that's a high travel time period, that week, um, because we have the marathon that Monday, you know, usually, and then, uh, like, and I also, I, I understand Heather's concerns. I can overcome Heather's concerns a little bit, because other towns do this. Um, but where Heather's concerns stick with me is the proximity or, or the, the relationship between when we have town meeting and the end of the fiscal year. That, that, to me, needs to be as limited of a time as possible, because we don't get good information until we get toward the end of the fiscal year anyway.
Yep.
So pushing this time period up a month, I think we're gonna be guessing more. I think it's gonna result in a less accurate budget um, or estimates, and, and I just don't see, and then it also just crunches us in the fall, which I guess I am supporting most of what Heather said.
Can I add just on to that, other towns do this? I'd like to see what other towns have for requirements, because our charter has a lot of requirements for deadlines.
Yeah.
I think you're winning the argument.
Yes.
Other towns.
They may not have that, you know, the hundred-and-fifty-day requirement to, you know, have warrant articles and by a certain time, and, you know, everything that, all the triggers that are in our charter.
All right.
Will the chair, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, since our, our charter sets, and, and because historically our town meeting, I think it used to be two weeks earlier, so election and town meeting used to be reversed about, uh, fifteen years ago. And then it was changed by a citizens petition then to have elections after the town meeting. Because we were electing new selectmen who had to serve in the town meeting, and they didn't make the decisions and the recommendations, since everybody thought that was kind of odd. Aside from that, everything is the, that's the anchor point, and everything is built around that. Other towns do it because they've always done it earlier, and therefore their timelines are built around that. This would crunch everything back to before the, the new year, which would make it very difficult, and, you know, it's, as the town manager said, should be putting together a budget before the governor even put out the proposed budget at the time. Like, this would be total dart at the dartboard, guess. And, and the second thing is, the proponents of, who submitted this petition, gave us reasoning, and I, I don't see any evidence, as I said last week or two weeks ago when we talked about it, that moving this is going to increase attendance. I just don't see people increasing attendance, because it's a month earlier. Because people who are parents, and yeah, they don't have little league, there's always, I mean, there's always stuff that's going on with their kids, there's always some activity. And, you know, the weather, it tends to be rainier, it tends to be more stormy, so therefore you're gonna lose a lot of people who don't feel comfortable driving in the rain or the bad weather. For all those reasons, I don't usually vote and for the printed warrant, I don't usually vote against the citizens petition, but in this one, I think this has way too many bad effects, and I, I, I will recommend disapproval of this article.
I'm gonna, the same, for, for all the reasons stated. Um, unless Mr. Dwyer wishes to speak on it, will the chair entertain a motion to disapprove of this at this time?
Of course.
Second.
Oh, okay, I'll make that, yeah, oh, okay, that was the motion.
Any, any other comments?
My comment, similar to last week, when town meeting is held and town elections doesn't make much difference to me. Uh, but obviously, there's some, uh, a compelling case could be made that the town charter, uh, makes moving it up problematic. So I, I think we should keep the status quo, so I'll support the disapproval.
And just as a point of clarification, too, while I, I still have the position that I would, I don't foresee a circumstance in which I would recommend that a citizens petition not be put, well, you can't do that, you can't, you can't, you can't do it anyway. So I have no problem recommending disapproval of a citizens petition, actually, so.
All right.
It's an opinion.
So the charter does give us the flexibility to move the date between April and May as we see fit. Um, not really as we see fit, we have a limited window there, but I do understand all the concerns and agree with them.
Can we just pile on for the record, too, that the finance committee was, you know, had issues with this, too? They, they saw the same problems.
Oh, they saw financial implication?
Yep.
Well, they saw, they saw. Yeah, because the budget process would be less accurate.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that was a point of discussion, actually, yeah.
Okay.
Is that?
You have to call the vote.
Yeah, 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 I'm sitting here looking at Heather like, all right, let's go. Yep, all right, um, we have a motion and a second. Um, to recommend disapproval, a vote in the affirmative, uh, is, is a no. So do we recommend, uh, as many, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, those opposed, no. All right, we recommend disapproval four to zero.
Roll set.
Okay. All right, how many, can you just recap for us? I just wanna see, how many of these did we defer? Because I, I do think that we have a responsibility to defer as few items as possible to inform Mrs. and Mr. Joe Public.
Seven.
All right.
You can also, you have meetings before town meeting, that if you have new information, you can vote at the, and announce your vote at town meeting.
I know. I'm just commenting that I think it's not, I like to give Mr. and Mrs. Joe Public a good sense of what the board thinks on this. I think that our recommendations matter a lot to a lot of, you know, to the public in terms of what's contentious and what's not. Um, so, you know, I know the financial stuff, I, I strongly believe that deferrals on financial articles going into town meeting is completely acceptable, because we're literally waiting for information to come in, but some of the other stuff, my preference is that we defer a little less, but I know tonight's a special circumstance.
So to clarify, it's actually eight. We deferred Article one, Article three, Article four, Article five, Article eight, uh, Article twelve, Article thirteen, and Article fourteen.
All right. Okay. All right. Any other items that you're looking for from us, uh, on the warrant?
No.
All right, let's go to the workshop. So this should be, um, hopefully we'll get through this pretty quick, so why don't we give ourselves a limit here tonight of about, uh, no more than, it's already nine o'clock, no more than thirty minutes, and we can pick all these up next month if we need to. So tonight is largely an introduction to the environmental policies, um, and so we, as, as a point of, let's, we're gonna start with the appointments. Um, so if we go into our Google Drive for the appointment policy, you have one in here that says clean. What I did was, I highlighted in here in blue the areas that were actually changed from our last meeting. And I didn't have many notes after the meeting, I think the reception was generally positive. Uh, I think I had some comments from Todd about, um, specifically the, on section seven, the key dates of adding in language, um, so, uh, related to the appointment process, and clarifying that, so you see that on the last page. And then also, on the first page, uh, there was that first, uh, you see, uh, Heather had noted in the first, excuse me, in the first paragraph, I had the word B instead of R, and that was pulled from the previous. Uh, also, the note in the second paragraph was about what the charter says, I had fourteen days, and, and it is in fact ten. Um, and then we have that language in appointment section that was noted by, uh, Mr. Dwyer as well about putting in the language that, that is more clear about when the volunteer application should be submitted. In the volunteer application itself, um, uh, which is another document in the drive.
Before you move to the, can we comment on these at all?
Yeah, I was gonna give a broad overview.
All right, all right.
No, you can.
I was giving the overview of the changes.
I didn't know he was entertaining the comments now or at the end, all right?
Um, and then on the, on the appointment, on the volunteer applications, uh, Mr. Dwyer also had commented that he really thought the second question on the reappointment form was really what we're trying to get at on the first form. Um, and so that question was added, and then also language was added into the application instructions that indicate that, um, that they have to submit the applications by a certain date to be considered for that year's rounds of, um, of vacancies. So those were the, kind of the key points that were, um, brought up, and those are the changes that were made. Um, so yes, Mr. Franco, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to introduce those changes.
Thank you. See, now I forgot what I was gonna say, so we should have taken it right away.
I should have taken it right away.
So. Uh, in the, uh, going back to the appointment policy, clean, uh, second paragraph, first of, of section one, where you have parenthetical ten, I'm not sure why that's, like, that's a common thing to do, like, if you put the word ten, and then, yeah.
So, we can take that off.
Or, or you can just put the word ten.
Put the word ten and.
Put the word ten and keep the parenthetical digits, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Unless I am.
I gotta make a note.
I wanna make sure that I didn't miss anything, but this is the first we're seeing this tonight? Like, this has not been emailed or around before tonight?
Hmm, oh, you weren't here at the meeting that we discussed it.
Oh, was it? Okay, so this was discussed at another meeting. All right, so it's, it's me who's, okay. Because I'm looking at this, I'm like, I haven't seen.
Yeah, I, my expectation tonight is that we're not going to be voting on this today. Um, Heather's not here anyway, uh, and, and I know that we wanna get her input, and I did recall that you weren't here for this discussion either, and so you're gonna have to, um, you know, review it and provide input. So we're gonna talk about this again. Uh, we do have a couple, a couple months here so before this, you know, would go into effect, so we have some time. But any initial, uh, thoughts as we go through this, Mr. Alonso, or do you want some more time?
Well, I guess I, I, yeah, I was gonna read it on the fly, but it looks like there's whole section six was added, and.
Yep.
And.
So I did include in here what you see is a tracked version, and what I noted on the tracked version is that I did rearrange a bit from the original, um, but I, I identified kinda, you know, what was new, what was not. The big changes were in the reappointment section, and then everything in ad hoc committee is as is, the exclusion is as is. And then six was the guidance for appointed officials, uh, and this whole area is, for the most part, new. And then the key dates at the very end was just a way to kinda summarize, uh, for, uh, Elaine and others kinda what those key dates in the process are. Uh, so everything in key dates is mentioned in the, in the body, it's just extracted to highlight it.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll have to review it. I apologize for not catching up on it.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't send them over to Elaine on Thursday, I didn't send them till this morning, so, understandable. Okay, we will. Okay, we will discuss it again, so, any things with those changes that you guys have concerns with? Okay, all right, so we'll talk about it, Tom probably is gonna be one of the, uh, next month meetings.
Okay, obviously, at this point, it's going to be one of the next month's meetings.
Uh, I, I should've, it might even be December.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All right, the other thing is the, um, environmental policies draft. So, what, what you have in the folder here is, is a couple of things. So, I will introduce this to the board. Um, again, we are not looking to vote on this tonight, this is a introduction. My, my expectation is that it's gonna take us some time, quite some time, uh, to, before we can approve the environmental policies. I'd like to get staff input after tonight. So, introducing these to the board, you also, so what I've provided for the board are two things. Number one is a draft environmental policies, and, and my intent is that this would be Section five point zero six. Um, at the, my working title for this is environmental support. There's also going to be another recommendation that's coming to you in December for community gardens, which is a continuation of this. Uh, that portion of this is not yet complete, um, and that will also likely be regulatory in, in, in Section Four instead of Section Five. I've also provided for you a second page that identifies the research. So, as you go through this, and this is, um, really for our benefit, it's six pages of all the websites that were used to, um, investigate, uh, this. So, I worked with, uh, doing some research on this, uh, there was a lot of good, um, different areas of this, there were some good samples. Um, I, I did use what a couple of different communities have done and hybrided them, um, kinda did a hybrid, melded them together. I also reviewed these with, um, um, uh, Mr. Jack Rabbit, and then also with, uh, different members from the Pollinator Habitat, uh, Jenny, I, I'm blanking on, is it Andrea? And then, uh, they also provided some input. I also individually met with Mr. Dwyer, um, for some input as well, based on his conservation experience. So, I wanna go ahead and introduce to the board and to the community what these are. So, this is Section five point zero six titled environmental support. Um, and the intent here, and I'll read the beginning, the beginning section. A healthy environment purifies air, cleans water, sequesters carbon, protects soil, mitigates extreme climate events, prevents species extinction, and promotes the public health, safety, and welfare of the town's citizens. Through its stewardship of town properties, the select board and town manager shall employ efficient, sustainable, and resilient management practices to identify, restore, and protect the town's ecosystems and natural resources for current and future generations. Recognize, I see an error, recognizing the interconnected nature of a healthy environment, these practices will effort to educate residents and local businesses to act on their own to restore, conserve, and use natural resources in a responsible manner. So, then this continues into sections, native vegetation, Section One, which we'll read through. Uh, Section Two, Pollinator Habitat. Uh, Section Three, Tree and Shrub Identification in the Village District. Section Four, Pesticides. Section Five, Fertilizer and Soil Management. Section Six, uh, Town Procurement of Native Plants and Landscaping Material. Section Seven, Energy and Resource Management. Section Eight, Annual Town Cleanup. And Section Nine, Veteran Services Coordinator. I think that seven pages is a lot to read through tonight, so it is not my intent to do that. And I think that, uh, I will instead kinda highlight as we go through this. Um, and then, since I know I couldn't provide this to the board really prior to today, I know you have not had the opportunity to read through this. I think it's only appropriate for us to really discuss this in depth at a future meeting. So, as, just to give you the old, broad overview, uh, native vegetation, um, so, again, utilizing the different research, um, I believe Somerville was the first community in Massachusetts to pass, um, legislation, uh, as a municipality that required native plants. So, in this, we have, um, you know, what native vegetation is, we have a definition. There's a couple different definitions of what a native plant is. What's generally accepted as the definition for our area is that native plants are those species that are indigenous to New England, New York, and Pennsylvania, and that were found prior to European settlement. That's usually the clearest way to, uh, identify, there's also different ways to say that, um, but that's, that's the gist. And so, the intent here is to identify that all trees that are planted on town properties, uh, that they must be native trees. Uh, the intent's to say that, uh, any kinda shrubs and flower installations, that they need to be seventy percent native, with exceptions, that the exception here is that the town can absolutely install, you know, um, some kind of, uh, uh, a flowerbed system. That's, that's, that's not native, that's, but really for educational, beautification, public awareness purposes. So, that way, you, we still have the ability to, to do things to kinda highlight, um, plant variety, species variety, but that the intent is to maintain, um, again, high, high percentage of, uh, native plants. Um, also, looking at native grasses, uh, on, on non-athletic fields, um, and that, that's a portion of it. Uh, limiting the removal of trees, that, that identifying that it's part of, that it can be part of a forest management process or strategy. Uh, or really just saying, you know, when necessary, for the health and safety of people, property, you know, and all the infrastructure that supports the town and all its residents. And that's kinda the highlight of the invasive species, and again, the, the idea is that, you know, the insects evolved with the plants, um, and that we need to keep them, uh, kinda going together. And so, that's the concept there. Uh, for Pollinator Habitat, it's a continuation of that. Uh, during our walkthrough, I think we identified on the weekend, that, you know, we have some pretty town, we have town property that's already functioning a lot as Pollinator Habitat. And so, the idea behind this section is to, uh, highlight that, you know, native plants have evolved with native pollinators. And then, and really to, uh, identify what those pollinators are, primarily insects, but sometimes birds or, or other mammals. And then, that we will identify certain parcels or portions of parcels, uh, that we intend to be, uh, Pollinator Habitat. And that, there's also implied in this, and I was, we were, I was careful to not put in too many restrictions and rules, to give town staff the freedom to be able to develop a good strategy. That processes are all often changing, the Pollinator Habitat, that's currently, uh, conservation land, you know, that land and sections are cleared every three years. There, there may be models that need to happen more frequently than that, there may be models that need to happen less frequently. So, the intent is to give some flexibility to staff, uh, to be able to evolve on this one. Um, and then also, noting, you know, one of the practices that are, that's going now, that's pretty common, is changing some of the roadside vegetation. And so, really empowering and encouraging the town manager or her designee, uh, to look into this. Um, to, to, to identify, you know, where we have those opportunities on the side of roadways to add in, um, you know, vegetation that's native, that's also, uh, you know, some kinds of flowers, to create that kinda Pollinator Habitat on roadsides that could decrease mowing needs in certain areas. But of course, safety line of sight, you know, this isn't gonna work everywhere. It's not gonna work on Lancaster, where there's probably gonna be some areas where, where it does. Uh, Section Three focuses on Tree and Shrub Identification in the Village District. So, the purpose of this is really to, and this is what this section does, it says, hey, every single tree, every kinda shrub, we need to start labeling in the, in the Village District. The reason for this is to increase public awareness, that part of conservation is plant identification. You need to know what you're looking at in order, in order to know, in order to plan on saving something, you have to identify what it is. And so, the idea here is really to, to think about the walkways, we're not talking the wooded areas behind, um, you know, behind the TC pass seals for that. But as we walk, you know, kids walk these routes every day. And I think that if, if we can offer them the awareness that, hey, you're gonna walk by the senior center every day on your way to the teen center, that at least you'll know what these three, five trees that you're looking at are. And that if they can, you know, leave, you know, graduate from our community with that kind of awareness, that helps in the future, pres- you know, the preservation efforts. So, really, this, the concept here is small placards, um, that are, that are identified, that say, you know, what the common name is, what the genus and species and origin. I do see, Tom, that when I was cutting and pasting, some of my numbers got missed out. So, there, there will be some formatting ideas here. So, that's the concept, is to really focus just on the Village District, where we know there's walkable traffic, um, and, and high population. This isn't, you know, too much of a heavy lift, but that's the concept. Pesticides. So, the intent here is to really, overall, to identify what pesticides are, as defined by, um, Massachusetts Pesticide Control Act. A lot of communities have created, like, pesticide control kind of committees. Um, I'm not proposing that we take that step, to me, that, that may be more than what we need to do. Um, but that, as a general rule, we say, we're not using pesticides on town property. Now, there are gonna always be exceptions, and so, what I wanna highlight here are the exceptions. That we say as a general rule, we're not gonna use them, however. We're not talking about water, um, and anything in the water that's done to make the water safe. You know, we're not talking about wastewater treatment plants, uh, we're not talking about lakes and waterways and anything that's done to, 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 um, uh, when so approved by the conservation, you know? We're not talking about basic pest control that people, that, that we can do at our properties, we're not talking about wasps and hornets, uh, and we're not talking about mosquito control, um, or treatment to trees to prevent death due to threat from invasive species. So, I think we, we carve out enough exceptions, but as a general guideline, we say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna add this stuff, uh, onto our land. And then, you know, fertilizer and soil management, uh, this is a, a bigger section, um, and it's, it's somewhat of a continuation of the pesticides, but it's a little bit more. Uh, what this is doing is, this is really pulling best practices. This is scientific based, and, and in the notes, I do have kinda where these numbers come from. How do, how did I come up with the phosphorus containing fertilizers and et cetera, et cetera? And, and really, what this is doing is, it's encouraging an organic, natural soil management type process. And then, again, we have exemptions, you know, we're not talking about potted plants, um, you know, there's certain things we're not talking. We're not talking about, uh, compost teas or liquids that people use, uh, but we are putting some restrictions on town property, uh, with fertilizers and soil management. Uh, Town Procurement of Native Plants and Landscape Materials. The town already has to, uh, follow the, um, process of procurement as outlined by the state. So, this is not to, by any means, kinda do away with that, but it's to highlight that, hey, you know, here in our own community, we say we're a farming community, that, that if we're gonna be looking for organic plants, rock soils, that we need to reach out to the people who do that within our own community and encourage them to provide proposals, uh, when we're looking for those materials. So, this is kinda obligating that effort, that we will reach out to internal resources, which is really codifying what we're already doing anyway. And that, it's encouraging us to, you know, source plants that, that don't have these nil nicotinoids, uh, which are especially considered to be problematic, and a lot of nurseries use them, uh, and that's kinda the key point there, and, and to the best extent that we can do. Uh, and then also, trying to minimize the cultivars and, and try to use straight species, uh, when we, when we can. And then also, adding in language here, you know, really to provide this section to the local nurseries, that, in that way, they are aware that, hey, these are our rules, they can make necessary changes to become, to provide products that may appeal to us or not. Um, but the intent is that this is really limited to town property. Uh, I am actually opposed to taking this and spreading this townwide. I, I think that may, to me, that crosses a couple of lines. But I think we should encourage the residents in the community and make it easier for them to adopt these practices themselves, if they so choose. And so, by providing kind of these rules to those local nurseries, and we have a few, it gives them the opportunity to provide the plants that we're encouraging to be planted. And then, uh, Energy and Resource Managing, Management, you know, the real focus here is, you know, is, is a hybrid of the Paris Accords, you know, the idea being that, you know, giving ourselves a target of two thousand and thirty-five for us to aim towards making, uh, for us to aim towards having a hundred percent of the town's electrical consumption supplied or generated by renewable sources of energy. Um, and, and really making this an effort. Um, adding in here, language that, hey, we're, we're always gonna buy electric and hybrid vehicles when practicable, um, putting in expectations that, you know, if an employee is coming with a capital project for something that's going to consume a fossil fuel, that they will at least provide the town manager with rationale for why there's not a more efficient vehicle that they're proposing. And there could be a variety of rationales given, and I've, and I've provided some, some samples here, that, you know, justifications could be due to unavailable alternatives, lifetime costs, maintenance requirements, negative impact in departments' operational capacity. So, keeping it broad enough that, you know, this can be a goal, but also, uh, again, flexible enough so that way, staff can actually get the things that they need. Putting in requirements that we will have, um, in tra- uh, that we will compost on town properties in the primary staff break rooms, and that generally, that will make sure we have recycling and trash receptacles available in town, in town buildings, which, again, a lot of this is codifying what we already do. And then G here, which speaks about the town manager or, or her designee in coordination with the Green Communities Committee, providing this kind of annual audit of town property, this is already happening. It's already what the Green Communities Committee is already doing, they actually receive support and usually grant money to assist them with this. So, this is just formalizing that and putting it into a format in which we're asking our facility DPW personnel to identify, uh, to, to track and also identify what can we do, what more can we do, to help minimize our carbon footprint over time. H is the annual town cleanup, so the, the concept here with the town cleanup, and, and looking around at what other communities do, what I found was that the, the communities that have in, involved select boards or mayor's offices often have the best results with town cleanup. Um, and that number one seemed to be the maps. That if you give people a map of the areas of town that you're looking to get cleaned, that you give them the opportunity to sign up for those areas, it allows them to take some kind of ownership of the process, um, and then, um, and then it moves forward. And then, and then the other components that seemed critical from when I was able to decipher was that, you know, you give people a drop-off location, but you also provide them with an alternative that maybe there are people who can pick up trash on the side of the road, but who can't necessarily drop it off. That you create an opportunity for others within the community, you know, I don't have a problem driving around picking up trash bags, to be able to help pick this up, it doesn't necessarily need to be, you know, a staff function, but it gives the opportunity, and, and I think, so, it's formatting it in a way that, that again, provides those maps, allows residents to sign up, you know, um, you know, kinda says, hey, we need adults here who are organizing this, uh, and, and helping this happen. And that, again, noting that if there's ever, and there are grants often made available to communities for Earth Day or annual town cleanups. And so, when those grants are provided, then that allows us to then give out those T-shirts and grabbers and raffles and other things. And then, the, the last thing is the Volunteer Services Coordinator. And so, there was a lot of discussion about how do we get more volunteers? That there are a lot of people who maybe don't wanna sit on a board, but who will give up a Saturday here and there to clean out, you know, Pollinator Habitat, um, or who can help do some trail maintenance. And so, the concept here for the Volunteer Services Coordinator is to create this kind of position, um, that, that really is like a board, but a one-person kinda board in many ways. The idea is that it's, it's a role that can work collaboratively with the select board, with the town manager, to identify what those community needs are, to kinda manage and, and develop those relationships with the, the different industries in town, as well as with the different municipal organizations, and see how they can help bridge that. Um, so, you know, and, and finding those, uh, you know, again, limited responsibilities here, but the idea being that this is, rather than give this to a board, that is really a kind of a passionate individual. I was honestly thinking of someone like, uh, Michelle believes enough that I'm, like, thinking that she's gonna do this, I think her plate's already full. But you think of someone like Michelle, uh, someone like Jenny, um, who, who are really good at being able to bring in volunteers. And it creates this kinda role that says, hey, you know, if we're trying to get a product done, maybe there's an opportunity to get donations of time, materials, et cetera, um, and, and it really just creates that kinda role. Rather than giving it to a committee, and again, limited opportunities, but really, it's, it's someone who also can help promote a lot of these things that are happening across the community. I expect there to be a lot of discussion about this, I know this is a lot of words to say. I expect there to be a lot of words about this, that I think there was a lot of thought that went into helping getting this document to this point. But I think there's a real expectation that, that at this point, we really need, you know, select board engagement, now that I'm presenting it to you, on how we can make this better and successful. Um, and I also believe that we need to really float this through some of the town departments that are gonna be implicated by this policy and see what, what they see as changes that need to happen as well. All right, that was a long-winded mouthful.
I just wanna, if I could, just say that, you know, apparently, I mean, it's clear that a ton of work went into this, appreciate that effort, so. And, and the input from, as well, from Todd, so, and, and everyone else who put into it, so.
So, what was the we, who, I, I, I don't know where, like, who wrote, who did the research and wrote this? Obviously, you did, Mr. Chair, a lot of it, but who else was?
Yeah.
Mentioned we, yeah, there was a lot of discussion, and you said we several times, I'm wondering who we.
Yeah, so I, I worked, I worked a lot with, with Jack Rabbit, um, also with Jenny who came before us. Um, Jenny Albertson, I believe her last name is, who's, who's run the Pollinator Habitat. And then, with Jenny Albertson, um, uh, is it Andrea Venenzia? If I'm getting that name right, Chuck Venenzia's wife, is it?
Venetia?
Venetia.
Yeah.
Um, she also, um, helped. Um, she also um helped on the specifically with the um.
Robin is her first name, isn't it?
Robin, um, why do I go, why I keep saying Andrea? I know it's Robin, I know her name's Rob. So Robin, yes, thank you. So Robin was really helpful with um with with a lot of this, but she helped rewrite the uh the first language in the section. Also, the native vegetation and the pollinator habitat heavily influenced um by Jenny and and Robin. Uh, they had a significant contribution to that uh those sections. All right, I know, again, it's a lot of information. I don't know if we're really in the position tonight to pick this up in the terms of a conversation. Uh, but are there any initial questions that come out to mind?
So there's, yeah, I mean, you mentioned at the near the end that that this will have to be passed. I mean, I I'm, uh, I would love to hear what the Conservation Commission has to say. I mean, obviously, I would say that I'm a little bit surprised that this is coming from the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, sorry. Um, this kind of policy certainly without the Conservation Commission. But so, I mean, some of these are good guidelines. Near the end, you start getting to a lot of reporting and a lot of people volunteering and a lot of people needing to have quarterly reports and energy reports and everything. And I and some of them are put on the town manager or designee. So I worry about the extra load that this is putting on and what the enforcement is. I mean, this is a lot of stuff. This is nine, you know, in one seven-page policy, nine different areas that we have to talk about uh largely. Um, you know, the thrust of it, I'm not against that, you know, what the what the intent is, but the implication about how it is done, I guess, is going to be important.
I agree. Um, as a as a next step, do you my, I I I think it would be appropriate to communicate this to um to the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board.
Where's the Planning Board's role in this?
In in the sense that I think that as they um I know that they don't really handle in the sense of my thought is that the Planning Board sees a lot of plans that come before them. Uh, they usually see a lot of uh design concepts, that there may be some, and there's also a lot of professional staff that are in similar industry, that there may be some input that the members have to offer to this from their own experience because it's a, it's so close to this.
But they would never um have to review the impact of any of these?
Correct.
Because it's on town property.
Correct. But I I think as individuals, I think it's, they're usually property-related professionals. So I think they might be helpful and just providing some good input, or not. But conservation as well, um, I was careful to, you know, to not note the word conservation throughout because I want to be clear that we're not talking about conservation property.
Another board or committee that would be um included would be Green Communities.
Possibly open space. I mean, I'm I'm not sure what their exact charge is.
All right.
Post-ownership, I don't know that they have any charge, so maybe that's not a good board.
And then I know Heather, you're going to bring this up with staff because there's a lot of implication. Um, so I I'm really interested in in the DPW and facilities.
Right, and other staff, uh, like the capital planning piece affects anyone purchasing equipment or vehicles. Um, building use as far as um break rooms, having, we don't have composts in our break rooms right now. And we don't have, uh, we have a cleaning company. We don't have a custodian on staff that's able to do that, and that's not every day. We're dealing with, as you're aware, the, you know, rodent issues and other issues as a primary versus, you know.
Yeah, they're usually, a lot of composts, like in in professional environments, we usually pick it up once a week.
If we had.
And they're kept in metal, metal bins.
I'm very familiar with them, yeah. It's not um an environment where we have someone come in every day or like your home.
Yeah.
Where you're able to remove your composts every day, you know.
I know what you're saying. So that's where I think it would be helpful to get some input. Uh, in my own professional world, like experience, um, I'm fifty-fifty when it comes to composting. So there are some properties that I, you know, or offices that we compost at and some that I don't. Because if the volume's not there, it's just not there. And you don't need food sitting around for a week that's rotting and smelling if no one's really putting anything in there. It's just a waste of time. Um, so I think that there, that's where I think the, you know, that's, even though as I worded it, uh, I think the wording in there is primary break rooms, so that way you can identify what your primary break rooms are. Um, but, you know, I would imagine that you have one at the police department. That's where, you know, police and fire, public safety building, but I don't, you know, I don't I don't think it's going to be everywhere. So hopefully that, but that would be helpful to get some input about how to change that or specify that. But again, in my own experience, it's it's fifty-fifty. Half the time, it's not a good application for composting.
Are we going to share this with the school committee as well?
We can.
I would also ask, Mr. Chair, if you have, in all your references, you reference the, I'm assuming, the the studies that were used in each of the sections. But can you provide towns that have adopted policies like this?
Yeah, so in the um, in the drive, when you go into the environmental policy research, so when it gets into um, you have to look a little bit. When it goes like pests pesticides and fertilizer as an example, and you see like Ashland, Mass., Wellfleet, Mass., Westford, Mass., that a lot of those are going to be examples of of other. We have Chatham, Grafton, Harwich, Mashpee, Air, Falmouth. So there's a couple there. And the same thing for invasive plants, it's really only um Somerville's the only community that has the real robust system. Uh, but if you if you look through the communities underneath all those, there are there are towns. Most of the research was other communities.
Pick those out.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this? Again, I know this is heavy and there's a lot more to talk about at a future date. Um, what's the best approach to the town manager? For me to send these or for uh your uh office to send them to the different boards?
Um, if you want to send them to the the board and committees, then I'll I'll send it to the staff.
Okay, I'll CC them. All right. Okay. And I did again give that research, I knew there were going to be, I, the first time I talked to Heather about this, she's like, I hope you have some uh, I hope you have some research on this.
Been asking for it, right?
You have been for months, and I'm like, you'll get it eventually. All right, no, thank you for your patience. And I, again, I know this was a heavy, heavy amount of information, it's a lot to to digest. And my my expectation that we're going to take some months to comb through it is going to take some time. Uh, and we need a lot of feedback because we want to get it right. All right, that is all that I have for um environmental policies tonight. We talked about appointments. I apologize, Robin, for calling you Andrea a thousand times tonight. And then on our workshop number two, Regulatory Article Four, we we did that in September um already. All right.
Chair, can I so to, can I go back to action items for a second?
Yes.
Because I see in our, I see you have a letter in in the Google Drive regarding the donation bins.
Yes.
Yeah, I real, at this point, I do not anticipate any positive motion or movement on this. We we have, we have made this company aware of in many times over the past years of this. I think it's time that the town, if we're looking at regulations and everything, we should look at policies for donation bins in town. Because this, that area is, is a disgrace, has been a disgrace. And if, you know, past is prologue, will continue to be a disgrace. Uh, just a pile of dumping that goes on there and all the cajoling in the world is going to happen. We should, we, there should be s- some penalties. There should be reasons, we we regulate jukeboxes for a license in this town. We should be able to regulate those kind of donations. And it's up to, if you want to have them as a property owner, then we'll allow them, but you have to keep them in order and and enough violations would rescind the ability to have them. Because we're not getting anywhere with asking.
Yep.
I think we really have to look at something that maybe has a little more teeth.
Okay, I I concur with you. My my thought as I was writing this, as I was writing this, I was like, we need, we need to regulate. Um, I think that the letter is kind of a last comment to me, but I think no matter what, I think we need to regulate. Because, you know, when I was really, when I was sitting down and looking through the pictures Heather Shroka sent over to me, and and I happened to catch the the person picking up this stuff, by the way, which is a huge, like, not a huge, but it's a, it's a box truck. That that as you're sitting there thinking like of all the mattress sets and the and the, this has to be their business model, right? I mean, a certain level of this, that if you were only interested in clothing and you consistently kept getting furniture and mattresses and household items, at some point, you'd start coming more frequently unless you really didn't mind getting all those other items, right? And so it just makes me wonder if if, again, that the intent might very well be to get the other items as well. That may say clothing because that's attractive, but they know what's happening. And if I was, I mean, again, I'm trying to put myself in the shoes, if I was in the industry where all I did was clothing, how are you getting rid of all this stuff? Like, why are you incurring that kind of cost if you just show up more frequently and only have clothing? Um, that it's, it seems to be a little bit more deliberate than I think maybe we're giving it credit for. Um, you know, on 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 the part of whoever owns the bins. But I agree that I think that we need to regulate. If licensing is the way to go, uh, then that may be the the best way to do it.
Yep.
But the secondary issue is not just the bins, it's also the fact that they don't clean up their property. And it's all the crap that's blowing all around the edges of of the whole Walmart in Hanaford that I noted in the first paragraph. And that's, that was what most of my conversations with store managers at Walmart in Hanaford have been related to was, hey, you guys clean up your parking lot, that's not my concern. It's the stuff that blows off your parking lot that you don't clean up. Um, and so that's the other component to this that that I want, you know, want to make sure we're communicating as well. But I don't know how we, speaking with Adam, that portion gets tricky to regulate.
Yes, I was going to ask, I was going to say, I'm for that to the extent that is possible. If 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 you say, hey, you have patrons and stuff come fall, you know, drops out of their car or out of their pockets and it blows off their thing, I mean, or maybe things from the street, from other properties, blow along the street and get caught in the bushes at the base of of the the hill. I mean, I don't know that you could force people to clean up their property. I mean, I don't know that, I mean, I think we should look at other people, other towns. Again, this problem, as I, you know, in in the digital Google age, this is easy to research. Other people can't, you know, have had to have had this problem and how have they resolved it, if at all?
Yeah.
Yeah, if I, I just want to add something to, just based, just to sort of, uh, there's been a lot of social media discussion of this whole, the bins there at at the Hanaford. I just want to clarify something because some people are under a mistaken belief. I just want to make it absolutely clear that these bins don't even have the virtue of being not-for-profit. They are not not-for-profit. These, it's, if you read on there, I mean, the first time I ever dropped something in there, I had already dropped it in and then I, then I saw, we read the thing, that that it's 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 not a tax deductible donation and and it's, they're profiting from it in some way. I don't know how they're doing it, but but uh, so, just to be clear. Uh, and, you know, you, there's a lot of alternatives too. There are alternative places to bring items uh that don't have this problem, uh, you know, all over the place. So if you just dig, I mean, there's Salvation Army, there's uh, I don't, I just, Habitat for Humanity doesn't take this kind of stuff, right?
No, but there's other charities that do.
Right, there's uh, what's the one over, there's this, this one's in Lemonster, there's something near uh Barnes and Noble, I think, although that one might be for profit as well, but they don't have the mess we got going on over here. I mean, this is, this is insane.
And it's, and it's, you know, some of this is, I mean, a- again, as I was writing this up and thinking about it in a different lens, and then you think, well, bins located near an egress, away from all the businesses, easy to get in, easy to get out, like, come on. Like, so, they knew what they were doing when they put this there, then there was a reason for it.
Yeah, but what, I mean, what is the reason?
The reason is to, actually, it encourages public dumping. So by putting the locate, if if these bins were located right outside the door of Hanaford, you wouldn't see this kind of waste. If they're located right outside of Walmart, you wouldn't see this. So it's it's the location in the property that that becomes the invite, the invitation.
But why would they want to promote public dumping?
What what I'm saying is that.
They wouldn't, you're saying that the specter of being observed, uh, because it's closer to the building.
Well, no, I I guess it seems as though if you're, if there's, I know that there, again, I I don't want to hypothesize too much here, but I have to imagine that there's some, that there's a market here for some of these items that are bulky items. And that that may be why it's it's it's, it's happening the way it's happening. Um, because again, if you are in the furniture, the clothing-only business, you're going to pick these bins up. You're going to come more often, this becomes a nuisance to you. You know, getting rid of all that stuff, if you're in the furniture business, how do you get rid of it? And why would you want to incur that kind of cost? But if you have a way to get rid of it, or if there's some profit margins on this stuff, uh, then you're not going to discourage that kind of behavior. So, you know, once a week pickups, when it's kind of over the top and excessive, every single week, to me, that there's a certain level of like deliberateness here that I, that I'm, that it seems to me.
Although, of course, there are some items there that by any objective standard are completely useless. Like a mattress that's in putting there, getting soaked through ten rainstorms.
Yeah.
Is is not useful to anybody.
No.
So, but, uh, you know, this is, I just want to make, I mean, I don't want to go too.
Has there been a lot of chatter on, I don't, you know, you know, I follow social media.
It goes in fits and starts.
Yeah, uh, the um, uh, you know, I don't want to go too much down this rabbit hole, but I mean, this, you know, you say we're going to have to regulate. I mean, this is how, and and, you know, I'm pretty averse to regulating myself as well as you or Mr. Jeffries in a lot of contexts. But this is how you get regulations and how you get overregulation because you have to police the conduct of the least common denominator in in society, essentially.
Well, that's what it is.
You, 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 you know, uh, you, you, that's who you have to cater to it and and guard against. And so that's, you know, ninety-seven percent of the people suffer because of three percent. So.
I mean, like I said, if they were to relocate these bins closer to one of these businesses, I think that would resolve the majority of the problem.
Yeah, but of course they're not going to do.
But they're not going to do that because they don't want the unsightliness in the businesses. But again, I'm sure whoever, well, the gentleman I saw picking his stuff up, I don't know anyone who picks up clothes and brings a box truck, I mean.
Wasn't there talk of them putting up a camera at some point or?
Yeah, they, they, when Heather reached out, that he had agreed to put up a camera system, but we haven't seen that.
Yeah. And what, and what, what is that going to do?
Yeah.
I don't even know what that's going to do.
Camera without monitoring is not going to do anything.
Right, right. That's the point is, yeah, they'll just care with a camera there. They won't care with a camera there, I meant.
Yeah.
If they, if they don't care without a camera, or they they don't care with a camera, then what's the point?
Yeah, it has, it has to be up to like Hanaford and Walmart to care. I mean, you know, that that.
If enough people stop going there because it's just an eyesore and disgusting, then I guess they might do something.
Yep, to be clear, most of the bins, I, if I recall, they're labeled for for clothes and and shoes, right?
Yes.
Right. If people dump other stuff, can we, you know, uh, use the police to ticket people for illegal dumping?
We could, but that would be them letting, telling us. Now, something that, and that would be my concern, it was it was them exporting, like, they're not employing any form of mitigation to minimize illegal dumping. So for us to become their police force, you know, for illegal dump. To me, that's a little problematic, but I know what you're saying. That we we want to discourage the illegal dumping generally, but they are, they can also mitigate the illegal dumping by moving the bins closer to the buildings, which we obviously know they're not, they don't want to do. Um, you know, by picking them up on a more frequent basis, you know, th- there are other ways that they can do this, you know? And they're just not doing it. So, I mean, I don't know, I've never seen security over there, not that they probably need it, but, you know.
And and fines for public dumping would would be costing the town because the amount that we would have to charge to try to collect that would be just, I mean, it would be nightmarish. And what are we going to do? And and of course, you know, you could stand there, it's like, like one of those speeding traps. You could have somebody sit there all day and they'll, they won't dump and then you should go home. Unless you're going to have somebody sit there at one in the morning at the.
Yeah, when it happens.
Walmart parking lot, you know, they're going to dump it then.
Pretty sure that fridge didn't get dropped off at two in the afternoon.
Right, exactly, exactly. Somebody just say, yeah, I got to run it for, by the way, I got to dump off my refrigerator at the Goodwill place.
All right.
And that's why we can't have nice things. There we go.
All right, committee reports. So we want to start with our walkthrough last Saturday? Anyone want to start with our walkthrough last Saturday, committee reports?
You, I believe you were there too.
I can start with it, all right. We conducted a, uh, the select board met on Saturday morning at ten o'clock until about eleven or so. Um, and we visited a handful of properties, center of town. The first one was uh one oh four, um. The first one was 104, was it Fairview? And it was a nice, you know, it was a good walk, it was a little wet that day, but it was a good parcel. You know, I think we walked away with a couple of questions about, we walked with a couple of questions, but we identified, you know, significant fields that seemed to have good pollinator habitat in them, other fields that would work well for haying or other purposes, and really just a lot of land. It seemed as if more than half the parcel was vegetated without any obvious kind of trail system in it that we could observe based on where we were walking. And the trail system that is there is clearly being maintained by someone, motorized vehicles, and it stopped the water, which makes sense. And, you know, and then the other parcel that we took a look at was up behind kinda Sealy Automotive, Mark Flag's property. You know, that parcel, I think, I think our thoughts on that while we were walking was that, you know, it really kind of is tied to whatever happens with the parcel in front of it, you know, but ultimately, right now, it acts as kind of a buffer between several parcels, and, you know, minimal activity. There are trail systems out there for the snow riders, but minimal evidence of other kinds of activity that are out there. So that was the gist. And we do need to schedule, reschedule a Whalen one. I need to check the weather, though, and so I'll reach out to the board on times for that. Our next, any other committee reports?
So, Finance Committee, last Thursday, had their public hearing on the special town meeting articles. And you saw the results, and the town manager, they took votes on what they could. The other thing was that, I guess it was last Wednesday, was the continuation of the 40B, the Pondview Commons up at Howard Street. The three most important things that were discussed at that meeting were the application fees of the 40B was discussed at length. The applicant is trying to ask for waivers on those, on the zoning, the ZBA's 40B fees, and so that will be further discussed. And then, we wanted to hear the, they wanted to hear the case of the applicant regarding the sewer districts and the water district, and how they thought that the ZBA had authority to do that. So the applicant's attorney brought forth some cases, our town council brought his own cases, and, you know, nothing was resolved, but there were a lot of questions regarding the authority of the ZBA to override what seems to be a legislative authority, as opposed to an executive authority. And that was, that will be discussed further as well. So all these were raised early on. I don't know when the next meeting is. I believe, believe it's the 26th, but I'm not...
I haven't seen a notice go out.
Yeah, so, there was, oh, there was a presentation of the traffic study of the applicant as well, that they really didn't, they discussed a little bit, but they wanted to get more clarification than they wanna get a further study. There were letters from both mayors of Fitchburg and Lemonster suggesting that the impact to Route 13 will have impacts on their two cities, and that a MEPA study should be required. So that is something that, again, will be investigated. So lots of activity, it was a solid meeting full of lots of, lots of information and discussion. Capital Planning met yesterday, and we, through the town manager, got all the department requests. So we are starting on our next meeting, which is, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but next...
26th, I think.
I think that's ours, is the 26th, too.
How many requests did you guys get?
Thirty, like, a little less than thirty.
For fiscal 2024?
Well, for this year, for this, yeah. Town manager keeps saying, "We got lots of requests because it goes 10 years out," but the ones that we're gonna be reviewing for this year are approximately 29.
For 10 years.
163 requests over 10 years.
10 years.
Right, okay. So, but there are 29 to go over in this, in this budget cycle. And we're planning, we're planning the schedule of who's gonna be presenting, so the first one is, is... We're going here.
Maybe 24th, it's a Monday, right?
Yes.
The 24th, and the 7th, and the 9th of November.
So, and we did utilize the new equipment that was put in place in the lower level of the Ritter to do Zoom meetings that could be broadcast. So it was with a device called the Owl, which is an omnidirectional speaker, that has an omnidirectional camera on it, and it focuses in split panels when people are talking. It worked really well, because we sat around a table, and we had the Zoom meeting on the meeting, so we were able to present, so it worked really well. And that was the inaugural of that equipment, the inaugural live broadcast of that equipment. So that worked out really well.
That's pretty cool.
So I wanna thank, who was our IT outsourced company?
Souzer IT.
Souzer, and then Dan Nadereski is our town IT employee who reviewed it with me, because I was the one who ran the equipment as chair. So I wanna thank him for doing a great job, and, and again, it's all, it was pretty seamless, which was nice.
Sure. All right, any other committee reports?
There's a Stormwater Task Force meeting Thursday at 7:00 PM. Highlighted on our agenda is Representative from CEI, Nick Cristofori, who's our consultant, is gonna go through our annual report on that, and to bring a lot of our new members up to speed on what they do and the things they track.
Okay, perfect.
I have nothing.
All right. The only other, my notes are Municipal Building Design Committee was supposed to meet this week. We made the decision to cancel the meeting, the reason being that we are still in the process of soliciting feedback on the concepts. And so, although we met with the Select Board, we also will be meeting with the School Committee tomorrow. We have a request to meet with the Planning Board. And then we know that the Ledger will be publishing an article on those concepts as well. And so our intent is to meet again the first Monday of November, to regroup after those different levels of engagement, to kind of talk about that feedback. So that's the next step. And then the Library Committee, with that, I will be at the School Committee meeting tomorrow night on behalf of the Lunberg Municipal Building Design Committee, and there's a library meeting tomorrow night as well. Usually they're on Thursdays, but this one was pushed forward today because of some scheduling conflicts. Do you have any committee reports, Heather? All right. So first, I wanna thank my fellow members, and noting that this is the last meeting of this month, in this three-hour model, and going into next month, we'll be back to our usual kind of two-hour model of how we kind of program the agendas. So our next meeting is November the 1st, then we're meeting again on November the 8th. November the 15th is our special town meeting, and November the 22nd is a, right now, a tentative meeting, if we have some business that needs to be conducted. Otherwise, that meeting will be likely canceled. Any public comments this evening from the public? Do we have any public?
No.
Any public comments from the town manager?
No.
From the board?
Just wanna remind people, Lunberg Water District meeting tomorrow night at their building on Mass Ave at 6:00 PM.
Okay. All right. My public comment this evening is, I shouldn't make them in November at the beginning of the meeting, or I should've said it tonight at the beginning, is, you know, November the 11th, every year is Veterans Day, and the best gift that we can always give to our veterans is our time. And so I encourage those at home, especially, that if there is a veteran that you know, that's in your family, that's in your neighborhood, to reach out and kind of, you know, plan to visit them on Veterans Day. It's a day where many people, for some people, it's a day of loss. For many, it hopefully is a day of remembrance, but nonetheless, it can be a difficult day in the lives of veterans, and really, the intent is for it to be a good one. So if we can just reach out to those we love, who we know have served, Veterans Day is for those who have served. So we reach out to those who've served in the armed forces, and really just offer them our time, come with a plan, that's really the best thing that we can always do for one another. All right, and that is it for my public comment, and we are gonna go into Executive Session. So I move to enter into Executive Session, and to adjourn after exiting Executive Session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and I, as chair, so declare.
Second. Not to return to...
Not to return to open meeting. All right. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Alonzo?
Aye.
And I for myself, thank you, and enjoy your evening. We will touch base again in November.
Have a safe and enjoyable Halloween, everyone.
Recording stopped.